Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting this evening. And we're going to have, the first thing we're going to do is have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present with the exception of Council Member Aguilara.
Okay, and tonight, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise, they're going to be led by our North County Young Marines. And they're going to all come forward and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us. We're going to let's all go down here.
Two, hold. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, I'll ask you all to stay here. We're going to have a moment of silence tonight. A moment of silence in honor of those killed and hurt in Las Vegas tragedy, and also for all of those that have lost their homes and lives lost in Northern California and in Anaheim, and the firefighters that are up there fighting the fires. So if we could have a moment of silence for that. Okay, thank you. You can be seated now if you'd like. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And before I do the proclamation, I need approval of the agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, so the next thing, we have a proclamation for all the young Marines that are here. And I understand this group is one of the Outstanding Prevention Program for San Diego County, and would be recognized at the annual Red Ribbons Luncheon. And so congratulations to all of them for that.[145.12][145.12](applause) And I have a proclamation for them. I don't know which one of you want to receive it. Is one of you, who's in charge?[162.62][162.62](laughing) Where are you? Okay, here's your proclamation, and I'm going to read this. So, it says, "Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and drug trafficking, there's hope that through education and drug demand reduction, those problems can be minimized. Whereas coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League, one of many organizations to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle through hard work and determination. Whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by the United States Congress in 1988 to educate the public on the merits of a drug-free lifestyle and to encourage involvement in drug use prevention and reduction efforts. October 23rd through the 28th has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. The Young Marines also established the Red Cord Project, where participants wear red cord bracelets 365 days a year as a visual pledge to remain drug-free. Now therefore, the Mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 20th through 28th, 2017 as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Vista and urge all citizens to join this special observance." And I want to thank the Young Marines for coming over and joining us this evening.[258.04][258.04](applause) Thank, simplify. Okay, so we have another presentation tonight. And this presentation is a proclamation declaring October 20th, 21st, and 22nd, 2017 to be Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in Vista. So joining me up at the podium here will be the Knights of Columbus Representatives, Roger Rowe and Bob DiMaggio, leaders Vicky Hebden and Lindsey Smith, and Downstown's participants Larry Pollard, Larry Brown, Jane Fisher, and Kaz Jorgensen. So I have... Okay, so I have the proclamation here. "Whereas the Knights of Columbus will hold their 30th Annual Tootsie Roll Drive on October 20th, 21st, and 22nd, 2017. Over 600 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for intellectually disabled children and adults in California. Whereas all money collected locally will be donated to Downstown, a nonprofit organization with residential homes in North County for adults with developmental disabilities such as Down Syndrome. Whereas intellectually disabled citizens are productive, contributing members of society. Funds raised through this candy drive will assist Downstown in supporting the continued independence of these citizens. Whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. So now therefore, the Mayor and members of our Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 20th, 21st, and 22nd, 2017 as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Day in Vista and urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help intellectually disabled children and adults in Vista and all throughout California." So congratulations on this week.[395.31][395.31](applause) Anybody has money for Tootsie Rolls, they'll, they'll come around and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys can meet there. Anybody up there? Yeah.
You can all help too.
Thank you all for doing that.[473.12][473.12](laughing) Okay. Is it safe to move on? Okay, I think we're good.[494.12][494.12](laughing) Yeah, you can eat them now. Clean up the wrappers.[498.12][498.12](laughing) Okay. Okay, next, we have one more proclamation today. So next, we have a proclamation declaring October 22nd, 2017 to be the bicentenary of the birth of Bahia Ula. And we want to call up Judy Maddox, Gianni Arginali, Josie Farhanji, and Foad Toji.[525.41][525.41](laughing) Come on up. Please join up here. And we have a proclamation for them. "Whereas the Bahai community of Vista, California was established in 1975, and in the 19th century, Bahia Ula..."
Bahaula.
How was it?
Bahaula.
Bahaula. Bahaula, the founder of the Bahai faith, brought a message of human dignity, oneness, suited to the requirements of contemporary life. Whereas October 22nd, 2017 marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Bahaula, which will be commemorated with a public celebration at the City of Carlsbad's Dove Library. The Bahai community is established in the City of Vista in 1975, and to commemorate the bicentenary of the birth of the Bahai founder's faith founder, the Vista Bahai community is purchasing and donating new benches to the Vista Library. Whereas the Bahai of Vista and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commemorating this bicentenary along with Bahais across the United States, around the world. Now therefore, the Mayor and members of the Vista City Council will hereby declare Sunday, October 22nd, 2017 as bicentenary...
Bicentenary.
I keep saying it, but I'm not sure I'm saying it right. Bicentenary of the birth of Bahaula. I have a speaker slip actually here for Brooke Wilson and Steve. Are you still here? For the Red Ribbon Proclamation, did you want to say something?
We're in the lobby.
The lobby? Okay, okay, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. We are here with the Public Policy Club at Rancho Buena Vista High School, and recommend your recognition of Red Ribbon Week to reduce drug problems in our community and congratulate the Young Marines for their service to support healthy communities. However, did you realize that alcohol remains our country's leading drug of abuse and most used drug by teens? We are here tonight to share our strong opposition of the upcoming Beer Run to be held on October 22nd and sponsored by Vista's Chamber of Commerce. Our members were concerned about this event when we learned about it a few weeks ago, and we're drafting a letter to the Chamber to express our concerns. The Beer Run is open to everyone with no age limit, yet the mere name Beer Run promotes alcohol consumption as its primary cause. The flyer states every runner 21 and over will receive their first beer for free. A 5K or half marathon is such a great event for a family to take part in, but then to have an example to little kids who may be running a free beer sets an extremely unhealthy example of why they should participate in a 5K or half marathon. On September 27th, we learned from a story in the Union Tribune that the drunk driver who killed a Rancho Buena Vista parent in June was drinking at a microbrewery. The fact that this parent was killed while jogging by a drunk driver who was drinking at a brewery makes this event completely irresponsible and insensitive. It is very hurtful and even offensive to the family, the community, and the entire Rancho Buena Vista high school population. The online promotion for the event states Vista is the microbrewery capital of the U.S. on a per capita basis, and we are going to enjoy this.
We would like to ask you to please reflect if it was your family member who had been killed by the drunk driver who was drinking at a microbrewery, what enjoyment would you be getting from such an event? We sent a letter expressing our concern to the Chamber of Commerce last week. We requested that they consider renaming the event so the main focus is not alcohol, and to offer non-alcoholic options to all race finishers instead of a free beer. We encouraged that they include strong prevention messages into the event to prevent underage drinking, drinking and driving, and overconsumption of alcohol. Instead of acknowledging our concerns, they replied that they would assess all aspects of the event after, or after the event was held. Then an hour later, they sent an email blast promoting the coolest bottle opener metal ever, featuring a giant beer mug. Members of the Public Policy Club are proud of Vista and all the recent improvements that have taken place around the city, and we want to be involved in promoting healthy and safe policies in Vista. We hope you can use your positions of authority to help support positive events in Vista and recognize that many residents, especially the Vang family, have no reason to celebrate beer. Thank you.
The recommendations are the following: Consent Calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's Secretary, and items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And our consent items are C1 through C7. And do I have, I don't have anything pulled from the public, anybody up here? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
On second.
Motion and a second. Okay, please cast your votes.
That motion passes 4-0 with Aguilar absent.
Okay, the next thing on our items are discussion items. We have three discussion items this evening, and it looks like a lot of speakers. So I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is not appropriate during this portion of the agenda, and this is also listed on the Agenda cover sheet. And so our first discussion item is Item D1, which is unleash dogs on public property within South Buena Vista Park and Buena Vista Park. Deputy Mayor Franklin asked for this item to be put on the agenda, so I will ask him to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for taking some time for this issue. Again, I've got a graphic here. As most of you will recall, about two months ago roughly, we took an action that we all felt was very strongly supported based on the evidence that we had at the time. And as soon as we did that, which was to expand off-leash hours into Buena Vista Park, I immediately began to hear from constituents. I submitted 78 pages of, these are double-sided pages, 78 pages, many of these pages with more than one constituent communication on them. And I know you probably haven't all had a time, time to read them, but the overwhelming sentiment was unhappiness with the decision. And one thing I've heard from folks on both sides of the issue is a strong displeasure with the fact that we did not take the step of posting notification at the park in question. I think with what we've been through recently with Bub Williamson Park, I personally feel that I've learned a strong lesson, which is when it comes to the parks, we owe it to the residents and the users of those parks to post at every entrance of the park a large sign and give plenty of time for decisions that are affecting those parks to be heard and considered. I was really delighted to find out that the Nextdoor app, which some of you are familiar with and some are not, about 25% of Vista homes are represented with one of the members of the home being a user of Nextdoor. As far as I'm aware, there's no particularly demographic trend among the users. It seems to be people of all ages, political persuasions, and of all kinds of distributions throughout our community. And there's been a robust conversation. I've included it here for some of you who don't live within the neighborhoods that are affected where the conversation was, was most highly discussed. There's a great new tool on Nextdoor, which is the ability to set up a simple poll. And I set up a simple poll, which you can read here. It's on the screen in front of you. It's very simply worded, and it reflected the decision that we faced, and it defined the problem as simply as I could. And you can see the results. 314 citizens of Vista, and again, we know with the Nextdoor app, everyone has to receive a postcard and confirm their address of residence. So we know that these are all folks that live in the City of Vista and, and have this particular interest in our community, in our parks. Because of the strong sentiments of disapproval about the process that we followed, what I'm asking for the council to do this evening is to consider a motion to create a new ordinance that would return the rules at Buena Vista Park only to the rules that were in effect prior to two months ago. And most important, what I want to communicate is, I want to send this discussion because there very clearly is a desire and a demand for members of our community to walk dogs off-leash. And I think perhaps there's more we can do to serve that community as well. What I really want to do is try to find some balance that might serve the interests of hopefully more than 59%. I'd like to get closer to 85%. I don't think we're going to be able to make everyone happy. But I thought it was so important because, you know, here we're talking about marijuana and red light cameras and so many other things in my short tenure on the council, and I have not received this much correspondence and this many phone calls and this much unhappy communication from constituents. And I do want to point out, you know, while I've owned large dogs and I've owned small dogs, I don't, me and my wife don't presently own a dog, and so my bad pun is I don't have a dog in this fight. I did not bring this back for consideration because a friend of mine didn't like it. I really, I got involved in the conversation on Nextdoor after someone else had already started the conversation, and I started my own conversation with the poll. I wanted to really understand what people felt. And when I saw the strength of the emotional response, and when I saw the results of the poll, you know, I take great weight when people come and they share their stories and their analogies with us, but I also really like to have some evidence that demonstrates what the sentiment of a larger group of the public is. 314 is certainly a statistically significant in a city our size. It's enough people that it begins to really have some relevance. And so I want to listen to those folks. And what I'm, what I am genuinely asking tonight is not that we're going to go one way or another, but that for the moment, we pause the decision by enacting a new ordinance that would return the rules to what they were, and that we would ask the Parks and Recreation Commission to begin the process of considering options for off-leash anew. And that would include having signs that are four foot by four foot that are posted for, I would say 30, maybe as many as 60 days. And two things. One, they would give, it would give people where to go on the city's website, where they could access more information about this decision. And also, they would give an email address, preferably info@cityofvista, because it's so easy to remember, where folks could send their comments. What I really want to do is, I really want to get at what the, the desire of the users of the park who are residents of the City of Vista. It's their park, and the folks who use the park every day, and who use it weekly and on a regular basis, those are the people that have the strongest interest in the park, and the people who live in our community are the ones that we should be listening to. And I will tell you, as far as why I was moved by the analogies and the stories, is the number of people that told me that either they don't use the park now because they have had an incident with off-leash, or who told me that they would not continue to use the park because they felt strongly enough about this rule change. And the parks are for everyone, and I want every member of our community to feel safe in the parks. I want folks who have dogs that are, you know, I walked with one of our Parks Commissioners, Mr. Hallis. I walked the trail, and we passed somebody who had a dog off-leash, and we stopped to have a brief friendly interaction, and the owner said, please, my dog's not friendly. You know, please don't approach him. And it's a fair thing. Some dogs are friendly, some aren't, and some are big, some are small. Not all dogs interact well with one another. There's so much unhappiness that I've become aware of that I really feel, more than anything, and what I've heard from folks is, the process wasn't right because they weren't aware of the decision, didn't feel that they had an opportunity to have input in the decision. And what I want more than anything is I want everyone's voice to be heard, and I want the users of the park to feel that their feelings and opinions were considered. And then I want us to, to come back at some point at which the Parks and Recreation Commission has gone through a deeper process of understanding what the people want. And then after that process is through, I think we'll better understand what the people want, and then we can make a better and more informed decision. You know, I said publicly, I personally feel that I made a mistake on this, that I, I wish that I would have done more outreach to understand what folks wanted. It was there just at the surface. I didn't have to work very hard to find out what folks wanted, and as soon as I really dug into it, I found out the breadth and depth of people's interest in this issue. And so that's all I've got to say about it for the moment, but I am making a motion that we adopt a new ordinance that would return the rules to what they were 60 days ago, and that we would direct the Parks and Recreation Commission to begin to explore this issue anew, and whatever recommendations are set out with a public workshop to be held at the park, same way that we're considering changes at Bub Williamson, to give neighbors an opportunity. By the way, I had a meeting with about 25 residents on Sunday at 3:00 PM, and we had a very respectful dialogue. There were people of different opinions that were there. Everyone had two to four minutes to speak their mind and to be heard, and I thought it was a productive conversation, even if we didn't change any minds, although I think there might have been one or two people that came away with it with a different perspective than they had before. So I want neighbors to come together and make this decision for their park, and I want them to feel like their opinions and voices were heard. So thank you for the time.
Okay, and I have 20 speakers here, so shall we go with the speakers? Okay, so, starting, and I'll call you, you have three minutes, everyone, and I will call your names, and I will call, actually, three names, so if you'll kind of line up over there the other two that aren't speaking, so that we can move along as quickly as possible. So first, we're going to call Norm Hallis. Norm will be followed by Jan Sibilius, and followed by Nancy Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'm Norm Hallis, 1530 Madrid Drive in Vista. I am a Parks and Rec Commissioner, but I am speaking just for myself, not for the commission. But I feel very strongly, after seeing the results and speaking with the councilman, that it would be best to refer this matter back to staff and to the Parks and Rec Commission. Let us take another look at it, consider other alternatives. Clearly, we didn't have enough dialogue when we made our decision, my opinion. So I support Councilman Franklin's suggestion. Let's return this. Let us do a better job procedurally of handling this particular matter. And I think if others would agree, I think that would save a lot of heat and discussion this evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Norm. Jan Sibilius, followed by Nancy Jones, followed by Brianna Frain.
Hi, I'm Jan Sibilius. Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for all of your correspondence. I appreciate it, and attention to all the council members. I've lived in Chateau de Norte for 29 years, original owner there in that house, 1976 White Birch Drive. My concern is I've been going to Buena Vista Park for 29 years. We've had dogs for over 20 of those, enjoyed it. Our kids grew up going down there. Our dogs went with us. Unfortunately, July, three years ago, we were attacked. Both our dogs were attacked, my husband was attacked. It was frightening, to say the least. I have a police report to support that. It's not anything I'm making up. So what's most disheartening for me is the fact that so many people on this thread, as John Franklin has mentioned, have been very hot and heavy. There's been a lot of accusations about dog haters and about people who hate dogs. I have three currently living in my home. I love dogs. My dogs have ranged from I have a 12-pounder now, up to I had a 120-pounder. I love them all. They have their place in the world, though, and I believe this park is first and foremost for the people, not for the dogs. If you can bring your dog, that's great, but to bring your dog off-leash brings a whole new level of safety issues, not just for people, but for dogs both. And I think that if we're going to stand behind as a city, and I know the Mayor has a huge dedication to the safety of all the people in Vista, we have to represent all the people in Vista. And, you know, it's great to be walking in a park, and if you have, unfortunately, my little ones that I have now are not friendly. And so when someone approaches me and they're yelling from afar with their dogs off-leash, that my dog is friendly, it's great, and I barely have time to get out of my mouth, but mine's not while they're leashed. By the time their dog reaches me and has my 11-pound, one-year-old Jack Russell in its mouth, and I am just so mortified, and it all went so quickly and ended with my husband on the ground being choked by this man who had just been yelling that his dogs are so friendly. So my appeal to you is, please, let's think of the children. Let's think of the school functions, the track meets, and all the things, so we all can go there. I'm not against dogs. I love dogs. I think if you have a dog that wants to be off-leash, there's other places you can take your dog. Perhaps you can find a fenced area within this park. I'm all for that. But I think for everyone to enjoy the park and be able to go there and feel safe, then they should have the choice to know that when they get out of their car, the minute they get out, that they're not going to be approached by a dog all the way through the end of their walk, and then back again, that they don't have to keep saying, I don't want to be approached by your dog, or my dogs are not friendly, or I don't feel safe by you. Because the human reaction has been so overwhelmingly extreme and... by you, because the human reaction has been so overwhelmingly extreme and negative, and especially on the Chateau de Norte poll, because it's been so many people talking about those of us who are afraid should stay home, those of us who don't like dogs should not then go walk in that park. Well, that's ridiculous. I love my dogs. I love my people more. I mean, I don't want my dogs to be attacked. I don't want my people to be attacked. I represent the people who feel the same way I do, because there are so many of them. Okay?
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Nancy Jones, followed by Brianna Frain, followed by William Melton.
Okay, I am Nancy B. Jones. I'm past president of the Women's Club of Vista, and a proud Vista resident since nineteen eighty-five. Thank you for reconsidering the off-leash rules, which were approved. I have walked at Buena Vista Park for thirty years, and I enjoy the natural setting. I am not a dog owner, but I do enjoy dogs. The signs at the park for all these years have announced dogs must be on leash. That is a county law. In the past few years, on every walk, my husband and I have encountered unleashed dogs. I've never seen any enforcement or patrol on these trails in all these years. I have never been attacked by unleashed dog, but I shy away from them. He's friendly from the owner is no guarantee of safety. When City Council approved off-leash, no enforcement was mandated, so the only backup plan was cooperation from the public, and that just doesn't work these days. The responses in the community have been overwhelmingly negative. I sent letters to the Mayor and City Council. City Council member Rigby responded that she voted against the Mayor and was now reluctant to walk the park. Thank you. Attacks on humans and dogs by unleashed dogs, even packs of dogs were reported, resulting in decisions to not use the park anymore. Owners rely on voice control, but you cannot stop a dog when they're on attack. So, I turned petitions in over there that we signed on Sunday and today. Eighteen people walk at Buena Vista Park. There are nine of them who walk their dogs. There are two reported dog injuries and many more on the web, on Next Door. And eighteen of those people were opposed to off-leash at Buena Vista Park. So, dog owners who want off-leash freedom need to use the off-leash hours at South Buena Vista Park. I don't have any objections to leashed, restrained, and trained dogs. They are beloved companions and a comfort to many, but off-leash dogs need to be in a confined area and not roaming without supervision. Hey, there's poison oak there. I don't want an encounter with a dog covered with poison oak. Okay? It's all about safety and public input for how this lovely natural park is used, so I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Brianna Frain, followed by William Melton, followed by Charlene Barron.
Okay. Hi, my name is Bree. I'm here today to represent not only myself, but the Ranch of Buena Vista Cross Country Team. We run at the park almost twice, sometimes even three times a week, and every single time, we encounter off-leash dogs. And mostly, once about a week or every once, two times a month, we encounter dogs that bark, that are off-leash, that bark, follow us, and sometimes even lunge at some of our runners, because since we're running, and the dogs kind of see us running to their owner, they kind of think that we're a threat, so they bark or lunge at us, which we try not to do, but we just can't help it, because people bring their dogs to the park off-leash. And we're not the only sport that runs there. Basketball and sometimes tennis run there as well. Same with other schools. When we hold our cross-country meets, we have many other schools from different districts from here, like San Marcos and Alcachuna, who come here, and they don't, they see the off-leash dogs here, and they see the leash sign, and they think, oh, these people here aren't following the rules. And when we're running, we sometimes do encounter dogs, especially when racing, and sometimes we just can't avoid them, and sometimes we hit them, and that is not our fault, and they end up blaming us. But since I'm mostly here for the cross-country team, I suppose I am in opposition to this, based off the safety of our runners. I am a senior, so I'm graduating, so I'm basically here to represent the future freshmen, sophomores, and juniors of the cross-country team, who are going to be running at the Buena Vista Park, or as known as the Duck Pond, because we really enjoy the Duck Pond. We really enjoy running there. We just don't enjoy dogs off-leashes, lunging and barking at us. So, I highly oppose to this, and I hope that you can keep the dogs on leashes. Thank you.
Thank you. William Melton, followed by Charlene Barron, followed by Kathy Bagwell.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is William Melton, and I've lived in Vista for eight years, and I've visited and used the park for six. I own two dogs, and I walk them both on those trails almost every night. I have several reasons why I'd like you to go back to the original ordinance and then relook at this issue. First, it is the law. California's laws impose what is known as strict liability on dog owners for any harm their dog causes to another person, including that person's property, which may be a dog that was just attacked. Leash laws require that a dog must be both leashed and under the handler's control, not one or the other, both. The intent of the law is not to punish the dogs or the owners, but to keep dogs, owners, and the public safe. An owner whose unleashed dog attacks, harms someone else, another dog, or something is liable, is likely to face civil liability, and possibly even misdemeanor criminal liability for violating these leash laws. And changing that and making it an unleashed, a leash-free park may somewhat alter these. Second, the change, well, the change could unintentionally shift the liability to the victim. The doctrine of negligence per se holds that a person violates a statute or ordinance intended to prevent a certain type of harm, and the violation causes another person to suffer that harm. In California, violation of leash laws can be the basis for liability. If you make it legal for dogs to run off-leash on the trails, then the folks who may have been injured from those loose dogs will have a much harder time recovering the cost from their injuries from those whose dogs have harmed them. If the city goes forward with permitting the dogs off-leash, then it shifts the liability from injury onto the victim, and they can no longer cite the statute as prima facie evidence that the dog owner was primarily at fault. Two, dogs under the control are less likely to get something, to get into something harmful. An off-leash dog can eat or drink something it's not supposed to. It can encounter a skunk, a rabid wild animal, a porcupine, a rattlesnake, which can cause serious injury or death to that dog. Keeping our dog friends on leashes helps keep them out of things that can harm them. Three, off-leash dogs may harm our environment. A loose dog can chase, injure, and harm wildlife. In the event the city changes the use of South Buena Park to be leash-free, then the California Environmental Quality Act requires that the proposed changes be examined and all impacts be determined and mitigated. And I've got to wonder if that's happened here. Certainly, all of the developments that have occurred around this park that allowed the park to be completed had mitigating measures for animals that come with those, excuse me. I'll be really quick on the rest.
You know what? Your time is up. We have a bunch of other speakers, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Charlene Barron, followed by Kathy Bagwell, followed by Patricia Mills.
Thank you. Before I begin, I need a point of clarification. It was my understanding that what we were addressing was a motion for reconsideration, not a brand-new ordinance, and I don't know that there has been public notice of a proposed new ordinance, so I'd like clarification on that. Let our attorney answer.
Yes, what's before the council is giving direction to staff, assuming that Councilmember Franklin's recommendation were approved. At a future date, an ordinance would be brought back for consideration by the City Council.
So, we're not speaking to a new ordinance on the agenda tonight?
No, although action tonight could result in a new meeting in the future that would consider that ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Charlene Barron. I live on Sonora Court in the Shadow Ridge area. I'm a regular user of the park. The off-leash policy on the trails did not begin with your action on August the twenty-second, twenty-seventeen. In fact, we've been told over and over again that off-leash dogs have been using the trails for many years. Recently, today, someone said they've been using the park for at least ten years, and off-leash dogs have been there. We have been told that some people have stopped going to the park or riding their bicycles because of the off-leash dogs. But if you recall the report of Mr. Deekman, those objections were never raised, and in fact, he chose to contact three or four agencies, and was told that there were only five or six phone calls annually that objected to off-leash dogs. Apparently, then, a culture was created because nobody objected, or nobody objected strenuously enough to force enforcement of the on-leash requirements. We merely requested, in our action, we merely requested that the City Council modify the existing ordinance, making it consistent with a long-established practice. In other words, the culture was created and has been created for a very long time. We wanted to bring the ordinance into consistency with the practice. By your action, you really didn't change anything, except perhaps the wording on the signs. You are a governmental entity, thus you cannot act arbitrarily. You must act upon facts, not fears. Your prior action was based upon the proper procedures of your Parks and Recreation Commission, remember, there were two meetings for that, and the due diligence research of your director. Both recommended the requested change, and in the previous five years, according to the report, there were no reports, as you have been told today, no police reports, no reports of packs of wild dogs and such. If you're going to make a decision based upon a poll, and I would remind you that not all of Vista and not all of surrounding area who use the park were included in that poll, so the poll is essentially ineffective to give you any information at all. But I want you to remember that when we brought our request, there were seventy-six people who signed that.
I need you to wrap up. Your time is up.
Thank you. And what I'd like to do is ask the people.
No, you can't do that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sorry. Kathy Bagwell, followed by Patricia Mills, followed by Ramona Edwards. No, uh-uh. Okay, if you want to clap, then next time, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and we'll just kind of take a break and get order back in our place here, so, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathy Bagwell. I reside at 1862 Turnberry Drive in Shadow Ridge Greens of Vista, and I am also on the Board of South Vista Communities. I'm very much a dog lover, was raised with dogs, have lots of friends with dogs, and I understand parents wanting to get outside with their dogs and have good exercise away from vehicles and concrete sidewalks. I'm in favor of designated dog parks, where dogs can run around and play with other dogs, get lots of exercise. These designated dog parks are fenced areas where dogs are safely confined, and their activity does not impose on people using other parts of the park. When it comes to walking dogs on trails within parks and elsewhere, I firmly believe that dogs should be on leash. I occasionally take care of friends' dogs and have personally experienced off-leash dogs running right up to us, and the trails in these particular areas are marked, dogs must be on leash. Unfortunately, we also have a culture of people thinking it doesn't apply to me. I've been extremely frightened that we would be attacked on these situations, and I've been knocked down by an overly enthusiastic large dog, fortunately friendly, but I didn't know that at the time. Dogs off-leash are not under the control of their owner as much as they may think they are. The city's legal counsel would need to answer this question. Does allowing dogs to be off-leash in a public park open the city to potential liability should a person or other dog be attacked and injured? All visitors to the park should feel comfortable to utilize Buena Vista Park and its trails during any park hours. So, I would respectfully request that the motion by Councilman Franklin go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Mills, followed by Ramona Edwards, followed by Lynell Sorana.
Good evening, Mayor and all council members. My name is Patricia Mills. I reside at 1163 Via Santa Paulo in Vista. I was here under the pretense this evening to defend the South Buena Vista Park for off-leash, and if I understand your number-one item correctly, that is not in jeopardy. Is that correct? Then I would like to commend all of you for the beautiful park that you give us. We can walk our dogs off-leash, and I can assure you that when we see someone with an unruly dog, it's not generally the dog, it's the person that owns the dog. And at our park, at your park, we waste no time in informing that owner, especially if they're new to the park. If your dog is not going to act accordingly with the rules to get along with everyone, you're really not welcome here, because everyone is in jeopardy, including ourselves and our dogs. But the design of the park is what I want to mention to you this evening, because it is beautiful. I've been to dog parks throughout San Diego, even down at Balboa Park, where they're fenced in, and I'm sorry for the person before me. I do not believe that's a nice dog park. The design that you have given us for both children at play, as well as our dogs, is absolutely wonderful. I've attended that park almost daily for eleven years, and I love it, and I hope to continue the same way that we've been. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ramona Edwards, followed by Lynell Sorana, followed by Leonard Finkel.
Hi, I'm Ramona Edwards, and I live at 1916 Alderwood Circle. I've lived in Vista twenty-five years, and I'm currently, I live right above the park, and I walk my dogs there every single night. I did not see one posting or receive one notification of the change prior to your initial vote on this matter. I am against making this park off-leash, because in the past six months, both of my dogs have been attacked, and they were attacked by unleashed dogs while they were on leash. Luckily, the first time, my husband was with me, and we were able to get the dog away from my Golden, but not before she was bleeding from her neck. The second time, I was walking by myself, and two large dogs attacked both my dogs. Luckily, two neighbors heard me screaming for help while I tried to fight away the big dogs, and they were able to get the dogs away from us. I understand that many dogs are great off-leash, but unfortunately, it only takes that one dog that reacts badly and causes a major problem, like I've experienced twice. If you allow off-leash at the current rules, I will no longer be able to go and use this park, because I don't believe that it'll be a safe, relaxing environment to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynell Sorana, followed by Leonard Finkel, followed by Andreas Escudada.
Hi, my name is Lynell Sorana. I live in Oxford Court, which is very close to the park, and I am a former dog owner. I don't own a dog currently, but I did have a big rottweiler that everybody was afraid of, but my dog was very friendly, loved to go off-leash. However, there are times, I have to say, that when my one-hundred-and-ten-pound dog was off-leash, other dogs did come up to him and were very aggressive, and with a dog that was the size of mine, I was afraid my dog would attack, and he never did. He just cowered by me, but the other dogs were very aggressive. So, I'm opposed to making the whole park off-leash, but there was a really good suggestion on Sunday, when we had the meeting with Councilman Franklin, that perhaps the backside, you know how the park is kind of two halves almost, the backside maybe could be made off-leash, and it's a big area, people could take their dogs and run, and not have a fenced-in area, and maybe leave an area that... and maybe leave an area that goes around the big hill for people that don't want to be in that off-leash area. So there's some separation, but it's not a fenced-in area. Because I know having a dog like a rottweiler, it did like to run around in a place like that without a fence, but yet, I wouldn't want people to get hurt or dogs to get hurt. So that might be a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Finkel, followed by Andreas, I think, I can't read it real well, but I think it's Sukada. Is that right? Oh, okay. Followed by Mark Bubert.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Leonard Finkel. I live on Oxford Court. That last speaker was very eloquent. I'm glad I married her. I don't have, I'm against the ordinance also. There's not a lot I can add, although at Congressman Franklin's meeting on Sunday, there are another, a number of other options that were potentially viable, that could potentially satisfy both sides, and I would like to see that conversation had. I used the park almost every day for more than three years. I ride my bicycle there, my wife and I hike there, and we've seen dogs chase the wildlife. I've had a dog chase my bike, never been caught, but it's just something I'd like to see, to have the dog park, the South Park, South Buena Vista Park, where dogs can be off-leash. I wouldn't be opposed to having part of the park off-leash, but I'd like, just, there's been so many stories here, that I'd just like to see the law be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Andreas, followed by Mark, it's Bubert, followed by Erica Glenn.
Dear Mayor and also Council members, good evening. Thanks very much for your time. My name is Andreas Sukada, living on Corder Lane, Vista. So I know this discussion is about Buena Vista Park. Actually, I'm a frequent user of South Buena Vista Park. However, I have been using also recently the Buena Vista Park. My experience using South Buena Vista Park is that it's a tremendously great park. As previous speaker had mentioned as well, it's designed really well, so that you don't really have a fenced area per se. But I also have noticed, working in the Buena Vista Park side, that you probably could have that kind of a similar design, where it's actually further away from the park entrance. Also, I do concur to the point raised before about notices. In the case of Buena Vista Park, you have the pond with the ducks. It's certainly not a good idea to have dogs and birds like that. And there should certainly be, you know, clear notices. I think it's something where both off-leash owners and dogs who are on-leash, as well as people who want to enjoy the park without dogs, I think there is a happy medium that can be reached, either by having better designs, just like South Buena Vista, or having clearly marked hours. I also believe strongly that dogs follow what the owner does. If you have a good owner who disciplines a dog correctly, you're going to have a dog respond that way, too. At the same time, you can put the dog in a very difficult position, too, by having a dog very closely encountering, say, birds or rabbits. It's a very difficult, difficult way to manage and control dogs. So, you know, one has to keep that in mind, but I think properly managed, you can have a happy medium. Also, as a previous, as a previous speaker had mentioned, too, a lot of this has to do with frequent use of the park, really having the unspoken way of ensuring new members comply to the way dogs are handled. In South Buena Vista Park, from my experience, I've been using that now for more than a year, if an unruly dog and an owner is there, that person is being corrected. It's an effort by all the people who use that park, and it's a community way of using it, and I believe that that can be extended in other areas as well. Thanks very much again.
Thank you. Mark Bubert, followed by Erica, it looks like Glenor or Glenon, Glenon, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Somebody left their touchy rolls here.
Oh, that was mine, but you can have it if you'd like. It's okay. I don't really need it.
Got to take care of the important stuff. My name is Mark Bubert, and I live in Vista on Shadow Ridge. I spend six to eight hours a week at the park, walking my dog. And I've read all these blogs. I did not participate in the blogs that Mr. Franklin talked about. I think you said 25% of people were involved in the blog. I think, and you said there was 18 pages or something, and I think it's important to note that, as I believe somebody else pointed out, that I don't think that's a very good judge to look at just those blogs. There's a lot of people that use the parks that aren't involved in the blogs. And in fact, I'd say probably a lot of dog owners don't, are more involved with their dogs than they are social media. And there's also a lot of exaggeration in those blogs, and really are, I, again, I don't spend 24 hours a day at the park, but I spend a lot of time at the park, and I've never seen any of those incidents. I've seen the track team, the cross-country team, I've seen bicyclists, I've seen every, I walk there a lot, eight hours a week, and I've never seen it. Now, I'm not saying it may not have happened, but I've never seen it. The other thing that was brought up here was the liability, and I believe that when this measure, when you guys voted on this measure, it was brought to the city attorney, and it was vetted with the city attorney. The liability that the other gentleman talked about, yes, it's a civil action. If your dog hurts somebody, it's a personal responsibility, it's not the responsibility of the city. And that's true with every dog park, whether it's Delmar Beach, or whether it's Carlsbad, or anywhere else. So fenced-in dog parks is really a bad idea. There's more bites and action with dogs on leash and fenced in, in dog parks. You can do the research yourself, but I just want to say thank you for the park, it's a wonderful park. Thank you for South Buena Vista Park. And I would like to read this just as an example. This is what one of the blogs said. "The best predictor of what would happen to Buena Vista Park is what happened at South Buena Vista Park. See for yourself, no rabbits, squirrels, sports activities, toddlers on the trail, et cetera. Just a dog park with a fenced-in area for kids. Chased others away." I would say that that is 100% not true. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erica, followed by Stephanie Jackel, followed by Gary Garretson.
Hi, my name is Erica Glenn, and I'm actually a resident of Oceanside, but I've been a teacher in Vista for 29 years, and I am the current varsity boys' cross-country coach at Rancho Buena Vista. And your new policy, the one that's currently on the books, not counting Mr. Franklin's recommendation, is a danger to our competitors when we have cross-country meets. We have six teams that compete. We start our competitions between 3:00 and 3:15 in the afternoon, and not only is our unleashed dogs problematic in terms of getting in the way of runners, but there are quite a few owners who are not happy that we are using those trails, even though that were permitted at that time. I'm a big dog lover who does put my dog on social media, and I live across from South Oceanside School, and I'm able to take my dog off-leash there, and I throw the ball for her, and we have a great time. I've also had experiences where my dog's been attacked by other dogs, and Oceanside Police has been called, and I'm quite certain they have better things to do with their time than responding to dog owners and dogs. So I would also assume that this off-leash policy is going to have the Vista sheriffs involved, because people are very passionate about their animals, and if their animals are threatened by another animal, that's quite an issue. Again, I'm a big dog lover. I think some of the suggestions about having part of the park reserved, maybe not fenced off, but is a good idea. But a lot of different constituents use the park. I'm sure that none of our cross-country teams are on Nextdoor. They're rather young students, but we use that, we've used it for the 29 years that I've been teaching in the district, and it's a wonderful resource. I'm just asking for public safety for you to reconsider. And at worst, if you could just at least say, during our cross-country meets, there is a restriction on unleashed dogs, because we have about 200 students running at the park at that time. Thank you.
Erica, you have, you have two speaker slips here.
Yeah, my other concern is that we are charged for using Buena Vista Park. We're charged not only at the time that we have our cross-country races, which our league fees pay for, but now we're also being asked to pay for practices, and I find that to be not a fair situation. We are part of the Vista Unified School District, and we are, many of our, most of our teachers are Vista residents, they pay taxes in Vista. When we have our practices there, we're talking about maybe 20 people using the park, and we're asked now to pay between $150 and $200 for the use of the park to practice. And I don't feel that's a just expense. We are very much pared down, we're not a revenue bringing in sport, as you can imagine, nobody pays to watch runners. And furthermore, other constituents use the park in larger numbers, and mountain biking P.E. uses it, various other high schools come and practice there. So I think the charging from the Parks Department of our school for the use of the park to practice is not a fair request. I don't have a problem with 200 kids using it for a meet, sure, we should be paying a fee. But for use to practice, what good is a park if you can't have your surrounding community able to use it?
Okay, I don't know.
So it's a separate issue, but that's why I had it on a different one.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
We got you both at once here on those.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Stephanie, followed by Gary Garretson, followed by Kim Cameron.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Stephanie Jackel, 1500 Green Oak Road in Vista. I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor John Franklin for the interesting discussion on Sunday in the Duck Pond Park. There were a lot of different points of view, and I found that very interesting. I would also, for the record, say I've owned and loved dogs all my life, so I'm definitely in favor of dogs. South Vista Communities has already said in a letter that we feel the August 22 decision was made without sufficient public notice, discussion, and community input. We hope very much that you will agree tonight to reconsider your decision to allow for this discussion and input. In doing that, we hope the proposal can be sent back through the staff, the Parks and Rec Commission, and then come back to you. We hope these important points will be fully considered in this process. First, what is the current daily use of the Duck Pond Park? Who is using it during what times of the day? Second, is there truly a need for additional off-leash space? Why? Could South Buena Vista Park be improved instead, so that the additional space wouldn't be needed? Third, is the city prepared to monitor and enforce its regulations, whatever they are, whatever the regulations are? From comments at Sunday's meeting and on Nextdoor, it appears there is no enforcement at the park at present, and from the comments tonight, obviously, that's a problem. These questions need to be answered before going forward. The questions of the location of a possible second off-leash park farther into the Duck Pond Park, away from the Duck Pond area itself, fencing or not in fencing, hours of use can be considered during the process coming back to you. But first, tonight, please agree to reconsider your previous decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Gary? Followed by Kim, it's like Cameron, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and all the people in the room, like me, that love dogs but love safety more. I would like to just present, put a face on Buena Vista Park and how the park is being used now. As we're going through this, I'd like you to imagine any slide that you see, 50 to 100, 100-pound dogs, worst-case scenario, I realize, off-leash. Man and a boy fishing. Right now, they're off-leash at the park, it's not enforced. People partying at the, at the, at the park. Picnicking, walking around looking at the creeks. The running club, either routine training, or they do a cross-country meet there. And there are 50 kids, under eight, up to 16, that are using that park on a regular basis. Imagine 25, 50 dogs off-leash. Family strolls, a dad, a boy, and a bike. Imagine a bunch of dogs running off-leash. How about the Avocado East League cluster last week? I believe it was five schools, but it could have been six, and I talked to five of the six, I'm sorry, four of the six coaches, and they were appalled that the city would consider off-leash. One of the coaches, the one from Rancho Buena Vista High School, immediately called the superintendent and said, "This can't possibly be. My kids are in potential harms way." There are 80 athletes running in this event. They use the entire park. There are 100 friends, fans, and family using this park. The seniors, by the way, that's supposed to be club, but I figured it would get some comedy, so I did it on purpose, right? But the caravan, cultural caravan, walking club has used this park, this park, and are planning on using it again. Imagine 25, 50 dogs off-leash with this group of senior citizens. Wild animals, but you've never seen those wild animals there, have you?
I haven't seen any elephants.
They're there. They're there. Quiet trails. There's a swing in there where people can just swing in the shade tree. Adult biking, runners with the dog, dogs off-leash at the Duck Pond now are, Duck Pond now are a problem. It will get worse. Imagine these toddlers, either on a bike or walking, with a bunch of dogs running off-leash. How about this person walking with a cane? Mom had a bad-mitten son.
Guess what?
All right, time is up.
Yeah.
Do not take away the freedom from fear for many to give special privileges to others.
He's quitting. He's done. Okay, Kim Cameron, followed by Kathleen Boyle, followed by Tom Misset.
This is a deaf crowd here.
Yeah, they are tonight, aren't they?
My name's Kim Cameron. I live at 1470 Fern Place. I've lived there for 45 years. I've used the Duck Pond, my girlfriend and I hike with our dog, well, let me say, we used to hike with our dogs. Now we have to have two people, because when you go out on the trails, as people have said, "Oh, don't worry, my dog's friendly." Well, my dog likes personal space, and that's why she's on a leash. If she's off-leash, she's very nice, no problem. I'll just turn her loose and be responsible with everybody. But I don't do that, because I don't want to be responsible for anybody else's dogs. So now we always have to hike in two people. That way, one of us can get between the dog and the really friendly dog that always comes up. So usually, we're not walking on the trails with dogs anymore, now we just hike up and down the hills. The thing I don't understand is why you would, why anybody would want, you already have South Buena Vista off-leash dog park. You guys just did a rainbow bridge, beautiful rainbow bridge, Dr. Reshiri sponsored it, Mel Rossett had sponsored it, because it's the off-leash dog park. Why come over and take away the kids and the family park by putting dogs off-leash? It just doesn't make sense when you have an off-leash dog park right on the other side. It's, it's not like they don't have one, and it's right there. Why come and take away the kids, the ducks, the wildlife? You have families there with picnics. There's just not a good, why? Why do we need two dog parks off-leash right there? People, your citizens deserve to be able to go to a park with the ducks and let their kids feed the ducks without worrying about dogs. It just doesn't make sense. They already have an off-leash dog park. I love dogs. I'm with dogs every day, and pigs, but I'm not going to take them there and have them off-leash. So if I want to, I'll go to the off-leash dog park half a block away. That's dedicated. I mean, you guys just did that beautiful rainbow bridge, so I don't understand why you do all that beautification there for off-leash, and then you want to come over and take away the kids' items, you know? It just doesn't make sense. It's just, I think we should be fair to the community, or we're just being greedy in wanting everything off-leash for our dogs, and it's just not fair to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Tom Misset.
Hi, good evening. I grew up in a small town in upstate New York, and it was the old days, and our dog was a big old dog, and he could run with us, and we would ride our bikes in the hills, my brother and I, and he could follow us along, and it was a lot of fun. Well, that doesn't hold true anymore. So those days are over, they have leash laws now, even in my-- They have leash laws now, even in my little cow town, and much more in the busy city like Vista. We have to have dogs that are under control. I don't go to Buena Vista Park. I go to Bringle Terrace usually, or further away. But when I'm just local, I go to Bringle Terrace, which is not an off-leash dog park. It's an on-leash dog park. And even with, even without the permission to have off-leash dogs, there are many, many off-leash dogs. So just, there's no enforcement of it. I have now two eight-pound dogs. I think there's something about a smaller dog. One of my dogs has a Papillon, she has a tail that goes backwards. I think for big dogs, genetically, they're programmed that that's maybe a squirrel or some sort of prey. I think it drives them crazy. She's been attacked three times. Once, she had a gash. Look, I've had friends who have had their dogs killed or horribly maimed and had to have expensive operations, not from Bringle Terrace, but it just really changes the dynamic. When I've complained to people about their dog, they denigrate me. I stood in front of the sign and said, "Look at that sign." I follow them sometimes and take pictures of their, of their license plate. But when I called Animal Control about the time my dog got most bitten, there's not really much they want to do about it. They, they would have done more if the dog had bitten me, and I was using my body as a barrier. And to have those teeth kind of coming at you when I was trying to protect the dog is very scary. But I was wishing the dog had bitten me instead of her, because then maybe a file would have been opened and something might have been done. I don't know. But I'm just adding my voice to the chorus of people who think that dogs should not be off-leash in, in many places, in many parks. Thank you.
Tom Misit, and Tom is our last speaker.
Thank you very much. Tom Misit, 1870 Key Largo Drive, Vista, California. First of all, I'd like to point out two basic flaws tonight. We're not talking about the Duck Pond, and we're not talking about Buena Vista Park. We're talking about the trails. All those photos you saw, and if you look at the poll, it says Buena Vista Park. It's not Buena Vista Park. It's the trails. So I just wanted to point that out. And I'm not here tonight to talk about dogs, or loud music, or junk cars. I'm talking about the procedures set up by the city of Vista on doing business in the city. Now granted, this, this procedure tonight is perfectly legal. So is taking a knee at the NFL games. It just doesn't smell right. This was brought to my attention by a group of people that use that park. I don't use that park. I'm nine years on the other side. They said, "What do we do? We want to make it legal." I said, "Well, let's go meet with this mayor and city manager and get our directions," which we did, as you know, Mr. Mayor. We were told, "Well, you take it to staff. Staff will make a recommendation. You'll send it to the Parks and Recs. Parks and Recs will make their recommendation, and they'll send it to City Council if it's, if it's so necessary." And evidently, it was, because we did it. So all I'm asking is, these seniors that spent six months doing the right thing, don't get the rug jerked out from underneath of them, and a, and a meeting is called when the ordinance is not even three weeks old. It was September 22nd, and when in effect, they haven't even changed the signs down there saying that it is legal. So I'm saying, do the right thing. I don't think that Vista wants to get the reputation that all you need to do is get 385 postings on an incorrect poll in order to get a special meeting held to change a decision that you, that you made. And I say to this, "Hey, great. Do what we did. If you're not happy with it, go to staff, present your deal, get it to the Parks and Rec, then get it, come forward." And if you guys, you know, I don't care one way or the other, but I've been in the newspaper business all my life, and we always took a good eye out for the, for the underprivileged guy, the small minority that's normally quiet, and not those that can come in and, and generate a, what I say, a false premise in order to have a special council meeting and take up all their time. Why don't you guys stand? It had to come out here tonight. Would you?
No. Tom.
Yeah, okay. All right.
It's okay. We can see the law.
But they all had to drive. They're senior citizens. A lot of them are down there in wheelchairs. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so, and I'll, I'll jump in first and tell you, the reason, the reason that I voted for it last time was because I don't hike that, I have a dog. I have a Mastiff, and I, my Mastiff is not real friendly, and I don't take him to the park, because that people, he's almost 200 pounds, and people get scared when they see him, and he's not real friendly either. So I don't take him to the parks. But, so I don't have a problem with dogs and hiking, but I thought that, in my understanding, that I don't hike that park is that the trails connected in the back, so that, you know, the trails, not the parks, but, you know, so the one that was off-leash, I thought was kind of silly to have, have, you know, these people hiking and have their dogs off-leash, and then the people from this side hiking and have to have their dogs on leash, and they meet in the middle. So that was, that was my whole thought and the whole thing. So anyway, so I will, I will see what these other people have to say here. So Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone who is here tonight and who came out to speak and let us hear what your opinion is. I appreciate that. And to the one comment from the one speaker about the process and that you did what you were, thought, you thought you had to do, you contacted staff, there was meeting, et cetera, I appreciate that very much. But I said this before, at the last meeting where I voted against this, I'll say it again, the process was not complete in that sufficient notice was never given to the residents of that community. It wasn't posted. It, really, nobody knew about it except the people who are involved. And your petition, which was never even presented to us at the council meeting, we didn't know about it until somebody here at the well says something, and it was given to us after the fact. To me, that is not the way to do policy in the city of Vista. We have communication with our community. We get input from everybody involved, not just one side of it. And so I support Councilman, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Franklin's proposal that we hit the reset button on this, and we go back and we finish that process, that we notice the rest of the community, we post proper notice at the park, we put it in the newspapers, we put it in all of those community newsletters, we post it everywhere, social media, that we do our very best for communication in the community, and then we bring this back again for discussion. I still have reservations about off-leash dogs at that park. And I'm, I love dogs. My little dog Angie, a Papillon. I know somebody said you had a little Papillon as well. My Angie was 18. I'm no longer a dog owner, but I had Ange for 18 years, and we have a plaque for her now up at Rainbow Bridge and South Buena Vista Park. So I love dogs. Everybody in my family has dogs. Everybody, they're all pit bulls, except one Rottweiler. So I love dogs. We do a lot with dogs. But my concern is having off-leash dogs at a family park, and I'm not talking trails. I'm talking the Duck Pond. I'm talking the picnic areas, and I'm talking where the little kids go, because there are a lot of off-leash dogs over there. So I think we, we definitely need to revisit this with sufficient notice to the community and for information from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And as a former Parks and Rec Commissioner, I appreciate that. But I'd also like to look at not just off-leash dog park, at this park. What I would like for the Parks and Recreation Department or Commission to do is to look at our off-leash policy citywide. Look at all of our parks. Look at what off-leash parks we have, on-leash parks we have, and just see if we can come up with a citywide picture for this, instead of park by park or neighborhood by neighborhood, and looking at what all of our assets are and how to best use them for the non-dog people and the, the dog on-leash, off-leash people. My other, my other concern just raised here tonight with the track team from Rancho Buena Vista High School, I, I understand, I received an email, because even before tonight and before it was going to be back on this agenda, there was a lot of communication, a lot of upset people that it had been done before. But I got, I got an email from somebody that one of your runners had been attacked by an off-leash dog, and I was very distressed to hear about that. So to find out that the Rancho Buena Vista High School, the Vista Unified School District, with whom we have a joint use agreement for these facilities, has to compete with off-leash dogs while they're having a track meet with not just your students, but with students from around the district, that's the first I'm realizing that that is happening, and I'm absolutely appalled that that happens. And I think that, in the very least, would be something we need to address. We should not be having our cross-country team competing for use of the trails, which they are entitled to through a joint use agreement with the school district and the city. They shouldn't have to compete with dogs on that trail. It's not safe for the dogs, and it's not safe for the students. So I think that is another thing that we need to look at as well. I'm looking at Norm, because we served on Parks and Rec, but I, I know our Parks and Rec director is in the back taking notes, I'm, I'm sure feverishly. There he is. So I would like to look at that. But one of the other things that we absolutely have to look at is enforcement. Just because Buena Vista Park hasn't had enforcement, adequate enforcement, doesn't make it okay to violate the rules. It's never okay to violate the rules, whether the cop is sitting behind you or not. So I was distressed to hear that, and, and people at the last meeting were very honest. "Oh, I've been taking my dog off-leash for years. Nobody cares." Well, yeah, some people do care. So if we're going to do on-leash or off-leash, we have to talk about enforcement. We have to talk about the patrols through our city, whether it's through our Sheriff's Department, whether it's our code enforcement, or whether we actually do have park rangers. So that's another thing that when staff brings this back to us, this issue, that's another component that I would like to see addressed in depth about how we're going to do enforcement, because I think that's integral to this whole discussion. So I would second Deputy Mayor Franklin's motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Green.
All right, so I've heard what everybody has said, and I've also done tons of investigation on the old, the old north Buena Vista Dog Park. One thing I do want to make clear is that it was brought to my attention when we made this, that it was only affecting the trails. I'm not wrong in saying that we're not allowing dogs off-leash around the dog pond and things, right? This is a trails-only discussion that we're having?
You're correct.
Okay, so it's not the entire north Buena Vista Dog Park that we're taking away from children and families and stuff like that, correct?
Not, not the Buena Vista Park. It's just the trails.
Just the trails. Okay. I just want to make sure I was correct, because that's what I investigated. So number one, as far as the poll on Nextdoor goes, I'm not going to even, not that I'm not going to take any merit to it, but I find it hard to believe that my fellow council members are taking such a big deal about it, because when we spent $35,000 on a poll and 74% of Vistans thought something, that didn't change your mind. And we polled the entire city of Vista, and we polled specific demographic groups who sent tons of money. I'm a member of Nextdoor in like five different communities. I hadn't had to verify my address. So I don't think that the credibility of that poll is as great as we would like it, okay? Not that there aren't some people who are definitely upset. The other thing is, as opposed to just listening to what there was online, and there's a lot of stuff online, I mean, I'm not supposed to be elected. Check online. But, you know, I went out to the park, and I've walked those trails five times since August 22nd. I met with Gary Garretson. He presented a long case of questions he had, problems he had. At the end of that meeting with Gary Garretson, we agreed to disagree. Gary Garretson, obviously, has gotten a good amount of traction from the other organizations that he's contacted, the cross-country team, the South Vista Communities. You know, he obviously has a, you know, problem with it, and that's great. He's going through the process as well. My feeling on it is that when Councilmember Franklin made the motion at the last meeting to allow off-leash dogs on the trail, he had the inclination that maybe, we may have to change it in the future. So it was made temporarily for a 12-month period. So it was a 12-month temporary trial of the off-leash at the Buena Vista Dog Park. It was, there was a petition that was signed, it was circulated, it was submitted to our Parks and Rec. Our mayor knew about it, our staff knew about it. So by the time it got to me, as a new council member, number one, I assumed the process had been through. For a change like this, I just have a question for the city manager and also the city attorney. For a change like this, did we provide, is sufficient notice required and a workshop required for a change like this typically in our, in our city code that you're aware of?
No. You could have a discussion, as you know, on any item, or the city council member, and an individual city council member can bring up a discussion on any item at any time. However, if we were going to make a change in the future, as our Assistant City Attorney, John Stone, said, it would need to come back in the form of an ordinance to supersede whatever was put in place in the past, such as the August 22nd decision.
Okay, what I'm saying is, in order to make that decision on the 28th, there's no, or the 22nd that we made, there was no requirement that was violated by us as a council in making that decision, right? Like, we were, we went through the proper process as far as...
Correct.
What we've required up until this point. Perhaps the process is flawed, but up until the point, that was the process, correct? The other thing was, is this was compared to the Bub Williamson Park issue, and the Bub Williamson Park issue was brought forth by staff, we found out, for the soccer, you know, arena. And I did say we needed to pump our brakes on that and have public workshops. I'm all for public inclusion. This particular change was brought about by citizens who use the park every day, who had a petition signed, who went through the appropriate process. Now, after I spoke with Gary Garretson, I did have some concerns, and I wanted to make sure that there weren't packs of dogs running around attacking people. 25 to 50 dogs against one baby? Are you kidding me? You know, 25 to 50 dogs against the senior walking crew? 25 to 50 dogs against the, the cross-country team? I walked it with both of my daughters three times. I walked it myself individually twice. Those five times, I probably spoke with at least 40 people on the trail. I walk up to people, I hand out my card, I say, "Hey, this is who I am. How do you feel about the change that made?" Out of all of the people that I talked to that were using the park, and mind you, Nextdoor says people aren't using it because they're scared, I mean, 90% of the people, that might even be a low number, were okay with the off-leash policy. It's the responsibility of the dog owner, and some dogs, I saw a Doberman Pinscher, a German Shepherd, a Rottweiler, and a Pitbull. They were all leashed, and their, and their owners were holding them. I did see a little dog walk up to a Pitbull, and the Pitbull didn't like it. It barked, the dog came back, the owner put their dog on a leash, and they went their separate ways. There's going to be instances with dogs, as there's instances, you know, with, with our kids sometimes. I mean, people treat dogs like their family. And my experience walking through the park, not just reading online, and I've seen a lot of Facebook threads, I've messaged people who are on Facebook threads, I don't get into the banter on Facebook in actual messages. Message me, call me, email me, we can talk about it. But my experience in the park is a lot different than what I'm hearing, and I don't know how many times my fellow council members have walked the entire trail from south to north Vista. It's one of the cleanest trails in the entire city. There are, there's hardly any litter around there. You will see some poop here and there, and poop bags here and there. There's two old people that apparently, sorry, I said you were old, apparently, twice a week, they walk through and they just pick up poop. And even people on their way out, if they see poop on the side, they pick it up and take it out with them. So there is respect for this park. There is a culture in the community to keep this park clean, to respect the safety of others. I do have concerns when it comes to a cross-country meet. If there is a cross-country meet scheduled, and they're paying for a permit for a cross-country meet, is there any city enforcement that occurs for those meets that are on site? Do we have packs of dogs running through the cross-country meets?
There is no current enforcement for the cross-country meets, and I couldn't answer the question on whether we have packs of dogs running through them.
Do we need to create something special? If somebody's paying for a permit, typically, we have, you know, we have our city staff do, you know, something, like, I mean, whether it's closing a road or something like that. Do we have to create a new policy so that if they are having a cross-country meet, we have it?
That's certainly something that our Special Events Committee could take a look at.
Would that require me reversing my decision? You know what I mean? So, so what I'm getting at is, the biggest legitimate concern that I see is cross-country meets. I have a lot of friends and families who have cross-country meets, okay? If we have 200 kids who are trying to run a cross-country meet, and there's 30 dogs on the trail during a cross-country meet, I would hope that a dog owner is responsible enough to not have their dog running off-leash when there's 200 kids running at a cross-country meet. However, I do believe that there should be some type of enforcement from that aspect. Did my decision change anything from that, or does this decision change anything from that?
I can't answer for your decision. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm asking...
Maybe I'm not understanding your question.
I think you're not understanding my question. I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering if, if I don't revisit this right now, if I say, "Hey, look, we made a decision, and it was a decision based off of information, and I'm confident in my decision. Perhaps I didn't, didn't go through the right process initially. Maybe I got real lucky, because all five times I was over there, it was great." And I do smell the smell at South Buena Vista Park. It's a dog park. It smells like dog urine a little bit. But I did speak with kids who were within the fenced area, and their parents know what to expect when they get there. But anyways, my question is, is that by, by revisiting, by not revisiting this, am I saying, "Hey, cross-country lady, I'm not going to look into protecting your runners at their cross-country meet?" meet"?
At this current time, the way we've structured in the past, if there's a meet and there's a permit given, we have not provided enforcement for that, whether that's for dogs or for other people coming onto the trails, interrupting the meet.
So that's a totally separate issue?
That's not something we've done to this point, correct?
Okay, so it's a separate issue. Okay, so we wrote all that down, wrote down Bub Williamson, let me see, people who use the park, I just want to make sure I get all my questions in here. The liability, okay? Does this open the city up for more liability if a dog owner can't control their dog as far as...
State law includes a provision which provides a level of protection to cities that create dog parks, so that in the event a dog produces an injury to another dog or to a person, the city will not be liable simply for the fact that it's elected to have a dog park.
Okay.
While that is true, I can't say that that would work as 100% protection in all instances and all circumstances.
Okay. And we currently have 13 parks in the city of Vista, if I'm not mistaken, and this is the only one that has off-leash area at this point, right?
South Buena Vista.
South Buena Vista. So out of 13 parks, we have South Buena Vista, which is, is that considered half of a park, or is that considered its own park?
It's considered its own park.
So it's considered its own park, okay. And we're basically taking half of North Buena Vista Park per se in the trails, right? So we're saying we want one and a half to be used for off-leash dogs?
We're saying that the trail area of Buena Vista Park, the August 22nd decision, to allow dogs off-leash during the specified hours during the morning and the afternoons.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm happy with my initial decision.
Okay, I have a question before I go on. So is there a shared agreement on that park with the Viscini and Clyde School District? Is that...
No, I don't believe so, I don't think the...
We do a shared agreement on different things, but is that one?
We do have a joint use agreement that involves certain facilities, but that is not one.
Okay, okay, that would be one of my questions. Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
My understanding in the past was it was a shared, part of the shared use agreement, perhaps that's changed. But in any case, we have a high school track team using that trail, and they shouldn't pay for the privilege of having to run with dogs. So I, no matter what happens with this motion, I would still like to see that looked into to protect the runners and the dogs. My little papillon, she'd get all tangled up in there. But what we're talking about is the process, and it's not that it could change, I mean, it could stay the same, that we allow off-leash dogs on the trails. Part of the problem we have is they're not restricted to the trails. Some of the dog owners just let their dogs off-leash, they get out of the car, and they're all over the place. That's one of the issues. But what we're talking about is the process, as it was done, was not complete, and the rest of that community, that neighborhood deserved to have a voice in it and to be heard. So that's what I think Deputy Mayor Franklin is looking at, and I'm not on Nextdoor, so I couldn't speak to that or any poll, any more than I can speak to the petition that was referenced tonight that was given to us after the fact last time. So I think it's, this is just giving the opportunity to those neighbors to come out and be heard, which is something that we are really striving for as a council and as a city, is to allow the voices of all the people involved to be heard. So that's what we're asking at this point, is just for more input and communication from and to the community. So I was also going to ask Deputy Mayor Franklin if you would reiterate or restate your motion, please.
Sure. My motion, and a slight correction, would be to instruct staff to bring back an ordinance that would return the rules as they were 60 days ago, or before the passage of the last relevant motion, and then further ask the Parks and Recreation Commission to bring this issue up as a discussion item, and to ensure that notice is given at all entrances of the park with four-foot-by-four-foot signs indicating where residents can find more information, and where residents can register their comments and concerns. That is my motion. And...
You...
I just wanted to add a few more thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilman Green, I actually have a difference of opinion with you when it, as it relates to whether or not the poll that we did on the marijuana issue moved the needle. I think it did change the minds of several of the members of the council. I think if you look at the positions that some members were advocating and held, I think they changed. I think the members of the council did care, do care, what they think the opinions are on an issue, this one's kind of similar to marijuana, where the citizens understand the issue. It's not like whether we should raise or lower sewer rates, it's not a complicated financial question or a future planning question, it's a simple one that people get. And that's why on an issue like this, I really want to understand what people want, what their preferences. You know, I'm really not an advocate for off-leash or on-leash. You know, as some others have said, and as I've badly punned several times, I don't have a dog in this fight. It's not a personal emotional issue for me, but what I want to pay attention to, anytime that several hundred of my neighbors reach out to me, and I had almost 100 people, and it's the correspondences there in your book, who reached out to me, not through Nextdoor, some of them became aware of the conversation on Nextdoor. I don't work for Nextdoor, and I don't get paid by them to promote their site. I do think it's a useful tool, everyone registers their address, for the most part, you can be fairly assured that they live where they say they live. I'm sure there's some people that don't, but, and I've also never asserted, and I didn't mean to confuse anyone, to believe that the poll of 314 people had a low margin of error or an aura of scientific credibility. I do believe, however, that anytime you're able to get the opinions of 314 people, who you can have a relatively high confidence that they reside within the city, I do think that it does have some statistical importance, and I do think it tends to show what the direction of opinion is. More than anything, the folks who are in favor of off-leash and the folks who are against it have all raised concerns about the process. And as you asked in your questions, did we violate the process? No, we didn't violate the process. One of the, I think the deepest problem that I have is the fact that our process didn't give notice, and residents came to us and they said, "Listen, I didn't even know that this was happening." We only gave, am I correct, did we do a mailing to people within 500 feet?
No.
No mailing. Did we undertake, other than putting it on the website and putting it on the public agenda and posting it on the front door of City Hall, did we undertake any other means to notify and engage the public and to solicit comment?
Just our noticing on the website, as you said, and the Parks and Rec Commission meetings into the city council.
So for all those people who didn't stop by in the three-day time period to look at the notice on City Hall or go to the website, they didn't know this was happening. And what I would respectfully ask is, the last park issue was in Councilwoman Rigby's neighborhood, this park issue's in my neighborhood, the next park issue's gonna be in your neighborhood, and it's gonna be the people that are your neighbors that are gonna be unhappy if we don't correct the process of how we make changes to the rules in parks and to the design of parks. I have learned, and honestly did not fully understand, how deeply emotionally attached people are to their parks. I know they're important to our community, they're important to me and to my family, but I didn't understand how important they are to some folks. And for that reason, I can tell you that I would never favor any change to any of the parks in your neighborhood without sufficient notice to the people that live near you, because I don't think that would be serving them well, and I don't think it would serve you well. So I really want to see the process corrected, and if the process ultimately uncovers the fact that it's not a problem to have off-leash, I'm not here as an advocate for one side or the other, I'm honestly not. I'm here as an advocate for a better process that attempts to divine what public opinion is, and what causes, and this is the center of it, this is the crux, what causes the greatest number of people to be able to feel that they can enjoy the park? It belongs to all of us here in the city, and I want everybody to feel that they can enjoy it. And frankly, even a few people telling me that they don't feel that they can enjoy the park is enough for me to at least say, "Did we consider all the facts? Does three days' public notice on the internet in our agenda, does that really genuinely constitute an effort on behalf of the city to reach out to its residents and to solicit their input?" I don't think any fair review of that can claim that that was a genuine effort that really revealed what the majority sentiment was. And for that reason, you know, I understand that your conversations yielded a different outcome than mine, but I've included, you know, all the correspondence from all the folks that you represent and I represent, quite a few more than just the number that you were able to speak to, and they're all seem to indicate that they use the park. From what I can tell, they all do reside in Vista, and they're asking us to take another attempt to get this right. And if that means that we ultimately reaffirm our original decision because we feel that that's what the community wants, I'm okay with that. But I just want to make sure that everybody's heard, I want to make sure that we do get it right, and I want to make sure that everybody feels like they can enjoy the parks. And so that's why I'm asking you to support this, and I appreciate your consideration.
Councilmember Green. Your turn.
Thank you. You know, I hear what you're saying, and I saw the emails, and I obviously didn't read through every single one of them, every single word, unfortunately. I felt like getting out there was the best way for me. Have you walked the trails a number of times and talked to everybody on the trails, too? How the people, well, I guess we can't have like dialogue like that, are we allowed to have dialogue like that? I don't know, I don't know.
You can have a dialogue.
I'm just wondering, like, when you talk to people on the trails, like, what's kind of the percentage of, like, how many people did you talk to on the trails, and were the people on the trails fearing for their life? And did you see any packs of dogs, too? I'd like to know that.
You know, I think I was there just before or after the pack of wild dogs. I'm not, I have not used hyperbole in this debate, and I'm not going to. There are a number of people sent me photographs of the surgery that their dogs had recovered from after they were attacked at our parks, thousands of dollars spent on surgery, and maybe that's only a few people. But the reality is, it is of deep concern to a number of people, and I'm not gonna say that your method of inquiry was inferior to mine, or that mine was superior to yours. I'm not gonna make that assertion. And I'm sorry if it sounded like...
Sounded like you did.
I'm sorry if it sounded like I did. That's not my intention. In fact, the point that I'm trying to most robustly make tonight is the fact that I still don't think that we've had enough input, and I think really, getting those signs up will make everybody aware who's a user of the park, because I firmly believe, and I'll go with you, I'll go with you this next week, and we'll talk to people, and we'll just ask them one question, "Were you even aware?" And I think the answer is gonna be, from 95% of the people, "I wasn't even aware that this was a discussion." If we were to put some significant signage on the way into the park at every entrance, I think people would become aware of it who are regular users of the park. And I don't think that anybody who is a weekly user, a monthly user, I don't think that they're gonna come back and tell us, "You know, I didn't even know," because they're gonna know. And we've talked about this issue of how do we elicit input from the community before, and I think on a lot of times, we've agreed that we need to do more to involve the residents in the decision. And this is, all this comes down to, to me, is involving the residents. I've made some of my neighbors very unhappy with me, very unhappy. There's some folks really don't like me now because I've done this, and, you know, to those folks, I apologize to them. I hope that they would understand that I'm genuinely trying to get to what the community wants, and even if that causes me a little bit of grief personally, I'm willing to do it because that's what I'm here for, and I just want to get it right, and that's all I'm asking for. And, you know, and I just feel that, you know, if there's a park that's in your neighborhood and you have a lot of unhappy neighbors, I think if they came to you and they said, "Councilman, we're not happy with what the city council did," I think it might, I think you might, in that instance, feel that you'd want to bring the issue back for consideration, so...
I appreciate your dialogue with me, and I want to do let you know, I do want to let you know, I can speak, I promise, if I did make this decision on a park and afterwards I had all the, you know, blowback that you have had, I feel like I would've said, "You know what, that's why we made it temporary and said that after 12 months we'd revisit it." And if after 12 months we have, you know, a much higher, you know, number of instances, in my opinion, then we've, you know, made the wrong decision. But I really feel like, based off of everything that I've done, all the people I've talked to, even people who seemed like they were really upset online, when I called and talked to them, they were unaware of the processes that had already been taking place. They were unaware that it wasn't the entire, you know, the entire duck pond. There was just not enough information for them online, other than, "Hey, the city council made another decision without the proper information again, aren't you upset about it?" And I really feel like it's, that's what got the people, you know, really fired up, which I've been fired up about a situation like that before. However, at the time, it was the process. We are here to change the process, not change decisions that we've already made. So I feel like what needs to be changed is, we need to work on processes. When D3 comes up, I'd like to talk about the shared use agreement, because, you know, we talk about thinking we have shared use agreements, yet we're charging 200 bucks to practice at one of our parks, you know? So when we talk about the budget, that's something I'd like to talk about, but in this instance, we've made a decision, we made it for a year, and we should give it the year. It went through the process, our Parks and Rec just, you know, made it 4-0, we passed it. You made a mistake, you said you made a mistake. Sometimes there's consequences to mistakes. This consequence, in my opinion, unless Mayor Ritter turns her decision over, is that we're gonna allow the 12 months of off-leash dogs. Thank you.
We all done down there? Okay, so I would just say, one of my concerns is the cross-country meets, and I think that maybe when they're going to have those, if they could put notices out, maybe a week or ahead or something, that the trail will be closed while they're doing that? I don't know why we couldn't do that, I would think that would be a good thing to do, you know, so no matter what. So that's one thing, that would be my thing. And the other thing, thinking if I had to walk there, because, you know, I have the dog that's, you know, could be not nice, and so I always, and the other day I was walking to City Hall here, and I had my little six-year-old granddaughter, and I was, she was walking with me, and a person came at me at City Hall here, and the dog was off the leash. And then my first inclination was, you know, to protect her, you know, is this dog okay or isn't it, you know? So I get that feeling, on the trail, I probably would have that feeling, too, if I was hiking there. So I don't have a problem with looking at it again, I know it's just the, I know it's the trails in the back, but I still don't think it makes sense to have an off-leash dog park here that shares a trail with one that's on-leash park. It doesn't make sense to me to that, but I like that we do have an off-leash dog park and that they can use the trail, so I know the dogs like to run, so, I mean, I just have, so it's my decision, isn't it? Where to go with this, so... So I mean, I'm thinking maybe that, I don't know if we should give it 12 months, or if we just, if we just come back and look at it again and see how we can fix the cross-country people, fix that, so that's, you know, taken care of, and make sure that nobody is off-leash when they're in the part where the ducks are and the park area, that part, and make sure that, maybe somehow make it stricter that they could only be on the back trails, if that makes sense. So I don't have a problem with that. So it's about the trails only, then that would be, then we would leave it the same, wouldn't we? Or bring it back and, for those two things. So I don't know, do we need an ordinance to do that?
Well...
I mean, it's an ordinance, it's a major thing.
You passed it with an ordinance, so if you want to make changes, we need to introduce a new ordinance to make any sort of changes going forward.
And with the cross-country thing, would that be a change?
I defer to Mr. Stone. It's certainly something that we could make modifications to the signings that we post.
I'd like to modify my motion to include a specific discussion on how we could make accommodations for the safety of the cross-country team.
Okay, so your ordinance is to go back to the way it was for, you know, and so I'm not sure if we could make sure that people were only on the trails, if we had some kind of rules at the park, and would that be a change if we, if that's the way it is now, isn't it? It's supposed to be only on the trails.
Can we increase enforcement without revisiting the item? That's the question. Can we increase enforcement without revisiting that? It's supposed to be enforced anyways, can we make sure it's enforced, and that when people pay for the park?
We've had, as all of you know... We've had, as all of you know, limited enforcement. The Humane Society does do routine patrols throughout the park from time to time. I think in the last three and a half years, they've been out about 80 times.
Can code enforcement go out?
It's what, it's what we deem the priorities then. So is your priority for code enforcement to be patrolling trails for off-leash dogs or is your priority for code enforcement to be looking at blight and other issues throughout the community that are part of your goals?
Well, it wouldn't be the trails, it would be the main part of the park, the part where the duck pond is and the main part before you got to the trails.
I thought you mentioned the trails.
Wouldn't be the trails, because that's.
So if you're looking at enforcing the park area, we can look at doing more enforcement in terms of the duck pond proper.
So do I need to, I'll ask you, do I need to send this back to talk about this at Parks and Recreation or is, are those things that we can do as, just without doing that?
The answer is that it really depends upon what you want to do, whether an amendment to the ordinance is required to accomplish it or not. So to actually have a park that is an off-leash dog park and simultaneously to allow for cross-country events occurring, that could be a circumstance, I mean, as understood, could, you know, result in injuries and might be an instance in which there could be an argument, for instance, that the immunity that would be available ordinarily for a dog park might be lost. So, you know, trying to squeeze too much into a single park is a complicated issue. And we would need to look at how to accommodate all the interests of the council in one ordinance, if that's the direction which the council is moving.
So then the other question is, so it's been working, so up until now, it's been working okay and the people have their dog park at the one end and they do the trails. And so so far, so it was working okay, I think, until we got to now. So, I know, can I just go home? Because it's a hard decision for me to know. I don't necessarily want to go back. I don't know that it's a good thing to take it away, but I don't, I also don't think it's a good thing to leave it there without, you know, maybe asking more people about it. So, okay, so I will vote, so how about I, I will vote with you guys and I will, I will send it back and make, and take care of the cross-country thing. I want to be sure we take care of that. And then I want to take care of how we will patrol, if it's okay for the trails, and how we patrol the rest of the park. And, but let's get it out there and so that everybody has their opinion on it. So I'm going to go with that.
And may I just add too, that I would like us to discuss fully any options or opportunities to accommodate those folks who want an off-leash option in a way that works for everyone. That should be part of the conversation too.
Okay.
So there was a motion made by Deputy Mayor Franklin with a modification of the cross-country issue. Would you like to vote on that motion then? Or is there a second to the motion or would you like to vote?
Can you repeat the entire motion so I can hear it one more time?
And you're okay with that addition to the motion?
Yeah, with whatever the addition.
Okay, okay, so then I guess I'll call for the vote.
Okay, so the motion is to instruct staff to bring a new ordinance to council which would return the rules in Buena Vista Park to the rules that were in effect before the previous ordinance 60 days ago. And to, in that.
Do you have to have an ordinance to do that?
We do, unfortunately, because we made the decision by ordinance. And in that ordinance, to consider, to instruct the, and that would be the ordinance. And then also, it would be to instruct staff to send this question to the Parks and Recreation Commission, to send the question about making new regulations to protect the cross-country team and its use of the park, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and ultimately to us. And what am I leaving out?
Noticing at the park.
And the noticing at the park with the signage as described and the opportunity for public notice and comment and also a workshop at the park.
Okay, so, okay, all right. And you got a second, right? Okay, cash your vote then. That record passes with Joe Green voting no and Councilman Aguilera abstain, or being absent, sorry. Okay, so that's it, guys, for now, okay? Hey, so we're going to move on. We're going to move on to, okay, wait, wait, you guys, we still have to have a meeting. So you kind of have to walk out quietly if that's okay with you. Okay, just shh.
At a council meeting in the future, it might be the 24th or it might be the meeting in November, staff will bring back an ordinance to return the park to the way it was, Buena Vista Park. And then we will go forward with a public outreach process through the Parks and Rec Commission.
Until the ordinance comes back?
Currently, it is off-leash until the ordinance comes back, is enacted upon by the city council.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, could we have a five-minute break?
Pardon?
Could we have a five-minute break?
Okay, moving on. Our audience all left. Next thing is our item D2, discussion item. It's our resident reward coins. Councilmember Green asked for this item to be put on the agenda, so I'm going to ask him to introduce the item.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, for this item. I found out after being elected that in order to use the city seal, that I have to have the approval of my council members. If you look at item 1D, you will see just a general picture. And I'm sorry, we don't have a slide for everybody. We should have, but we didn't. Next time I'll be better. It's probably my fault. There's only this many of you here, okay? Basically, all that I'm proposing is that you allow the city seal to be the front side of my coin. Initially, what I'm proposing is a citywide coin. We're not broken into districts, we're not districts yet. Perhaps when we are districts, we can all have our different coins for our districts designed by our district. But at this time, what I'd like is the general city seal on one side, a picture of city hall on the other side, preferably a much better picture than the one that I'm using here. We don't really need so much authorization for the picture on the back as we do for the city seal on front. I've also brought a couple coins that are city coins and also one that our deputy sheriffs have made for you guys to kind of look at so you can see what other types of coins. The Oceanside one is a cheaper one, it's about two bucks. The one that the deputy sheriffs made was about five bucks, it's a little bit better quality. I am proposing a larger coin that is going to be a chrome-colored coin on the front and back. I would like initially for it to just be a citywide coin that we all have the ability to give out as a reward for citizens in our community that do good things to make a difference in the community. There are other cities that do it. The way the City of Oceanside does it is they allow their council members to use the budget that they have allotted, which we all receive a $2,500 per year budget, which I haven't touched and don't plan on touching. However, if we could use a portion of that, that would be great. If not, I'm even willing to buy these coins myself. It was kind of thought by me, is after I spoke with Oceanside on how they do it, oh, look, there's our rendering of our city coin. After speaking with Oceanside on how they did it, it basically allows each council member at their discretion to purchase the coins with funds that are already allotted to them for either training or what they want to use it for. So, you know, my first preference would be to use city funds that are already set aside for what we want to spend as a council. However, if that is frowned upon, just the authorization to use the city seal to come up with a reward coin for our citizens would be sufficient for me at this point in time. And I will defer to whatever my colleagues say at this point.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Joe, for bringing this up. This is something that another previous councilman and myself brought up a few years ago that we were looking at, but at the time, it was out of pocket and it was exceedingly expensive to do out of pocket. So I appreciate you brought this back again. I wouldn't want to use it out of my budget because I use my budget for travel when I'm off, you know, expenses for travel for the city that aren't already budgeted in other areas. So I couldn't do it out of my budget. But going to the design of it, of course, I love the front side of our City of Vista logo, seal. Although, it could just be me, but I've always thought somewhere in there, and it really hit me, again, looking at your design, it should say California in there somewhere, because we are not the only Vista. I've learned that when I've tried to look for things for the City of Vista. New York has a bigger presence online than we do, I'm just saying. That's here nor there. But on the backside, we have a lovely city hall, actually, we have a beautiful city hall. This isn't a picture I would use. This is not the best picture of city hall. But more than that, I would really rather, on the backside, and I know Oceanside has a picture of their city hall, I'm sure it's lovely, but I would like to use our mission statement. And I have a collection of challenge coins in my office as well, and I was going through them, you know, for this discussion. And some of them, like, I received one from the City of Bedford, Texas, a couple of years ago, when I was back there from the police department, and it has their police department logo. And then on the backside, it has the police officer's prayer. And then also from the County of San Diego, from the Sheriff's Department. I'm just going to put this out there, Captain Cinemo, I saw the mayor's Vista coin. I don't have one of those. But I do have the Sheriff's Department one, and on the back, it has also a prayer for the Memorial Wake Foundation, San Diego County Memorial Wake Foundation. So I think the picture of city hall is lovely, but I would like to put our mission statement on the back of it. And I want to just read what our mission statement is, and I have this in my office and I look at it every time I'm in my office. And it says, "The city is dedicated to providing exceptional services to improving Vista's quality of life and to enhance the uniqueness of the Vista community." And I still really appreciate very much this mission statement, so I would like to see us put the mission statement on the back of it. Just putting that out there.
And I have a speaker, would you like to hear our speaker?
Of course.
Gary Garrison. You can choose, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Gary Garrison, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just want to stand up and tell you how much I support this idea. I have my Navy challenge coin here that I try to keep with me when I travel or go to veterans groups. And I have one from a Master Sergeant Lawrence Peterson, Silver Star, Purple Heart in Vietnam. And it's one of my most prized possessions. And he uses these when he speaks to schools. And he challenges them to stay in school, to get a good education, to stay away from gangs, stay away from drugs. And it's amazing how many kids, five, 10 years later, come back to him and say, "I still have your challenge coin." So I absolutely support this. I think it's an absolutely terrific idea. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Green.
All right. As I stated, I am not in love with the rear side of the coin. You have been staring at the city's mission statement for more years than I, and I love the city's mission statement. So I would be totally okay with the design that the sheriffs have, actually, I think is fantastic. Maybe where we have the city seal, and around the top, we just have Vista, and then California down low. If you look at their coin, that might be good. And then on the back, have our mission statement. So I'm fine with that. I think really what we need to do is give the staff consensus to okay the use of the city seal for a coin. And I mean, I agree with you on the, I think that's a great idea for the rear of it, the mission statement. So if we could get consensus on that for design, that would be great. And then also just question on, you know, how do we, how do we pay for it, you know? Because I, when I spoke with the city manager, a lot of us don't use our entire budget. Some of us don't use any of that budget. And I think this would be a great PR tool for the city, for us to be able to do this. And it is a heavy out-of-pocket expense. I would loan a portion of mine. Take some of mine to you, so you can charge all of yours on my account until my account is full. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm good with that, too. So anyway, that's where I'm at with it. So I think the design is good.
Do you need a motion?
What is your motion?
What would it be?
You'd need one.
And then you'll let us know.
And I think it's important...
Yeah. Joe, do you want to make the motion?
Well, the only motion I am super clear on right now is that I would like to approve the design of the coin with the city seal on the front and our mission statement on the back, and make sure that California is specified on the coin somewhere as well, so they know we're not New York, Vista, New York, or whatever. That's the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Do you, do you want to move to approve this design, or do you want to move to, to give direction to the staff to use the city seal on a design that incorporates the elements that Councilwoman Rigby and yourself have outlined, and then bring back a final design to be approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what I want to do.
I think that's a good idea.
And I didn't hear as part of your motion, a funding mechanism, so is the council...
I thought that might have to be a separate motion. I didn't want to cloud it up.
I have one more question.
Well, if...
Okay. Are there any legal issues to consider in purchasing an item with public funds and gifting it?
Those are names that are added.
If it's used to promote the city, that's a proper use of the coin. It would not be used in exchange for a political contribution, for instance, which I think it's, I see everybody is laughing, but so that's understood.
Right. You know, I would suggest, as some members want to prioritize their budgets for other purposes like travel, and also due to the fact that there is an economy of scale in the purchase of these things, maybe it would make sense to acquire a fixed quantity and divide them, let's say, in such number of fractions as the city manager deems appropriate. I'm sure the city manager would want some number, and the city attorney might want some number to hand out. Or, you know, whatever the council deems appropriate to divide the...
All purchased with city funds, not our individual.
Yeah. If we're in support of using public resources to do it.
So is there an amount, though, that, there's a threshold?
I would say when you, the City of Oceanside's last purchase was for 1,000 coins. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and they spent roughly $3 plus tax on the coin.
So they spent about 3,000. So maybe we, not to exceed 5,000 bucks?
Not to exceed 5,000.
Not to exceed $5,000. You guys all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go. So the motion is...
Put in the budget. Or take it out of our budget, maybe.
Have the conversation in a minute with Lauren.
You understand what the motion is now, Patrick, with the design and up to $5,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you find space?
Anybody second it?
Second.
Balance for this?
Yeah, we can find it.
We have a first-quarter report coming to you. Less than a, or in a month, and we will make sure that it is included, so we can take care of this for you.
Do you want us to vote?
No, I think it's, there's direction from the council.
Okay, his direction. Okay, so that's it then, right, for that? Moving on to D3. What time is it? So we might get out of here by 8 o'clock, maybe. Okay. Fiscal year 2016-17 fourth-quarter report. Finance Director Lauren Moreham is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2016 to 17 fourth-quarter report serves as a summary and comparison of budget-to-actual results for the general fund for the current and prior fiscal year ending June 30. Also included in the agenda report are the year-end financials for the enterprise funds, financial and economic highlights, Prop L sales tax reserve balances, and classified general fund balances at June 30. Total general fund revenues were $72.9 million, compared to $74.5 million in the prior year, which is a slight decrease of $1.6 million or 2.2%. Actual results were above or favorable to the city's projected revenue budget. Property taxes and sales taxes are the city's largest source of revenue. Total taxes had a slight increase of $1.3 million over the prior year, or 2.5%. The increase was primarily due to growth in property tax receipts, which is due to assessed property valuations continuing to modestly increase year over year. Exhibit 2 on page 10 provides narrative explanations for some of the revenue line items worthy of noting. Total general fund expenditures were $80.9 million, within and favorable, favorable to the budget projection by $4.9 million. Both revenues and expenditures were in line with expectations. The agenda report includes recommendations of future uses of the available general fund year-end fund balance. After funding reserves and designations, $6.4 million remains in available general fund year-end fund balance. The city manager recommends 12 uses as detailed on page 2 of the agenda report. This includes future project uses of $1.6 million. An additional $1.8 million is proposed to fund the city's retirements benefits Section 115 trust deposit, and $3 million to fund the city's general fund emergency reserves. This would bring the emergency reserves balance to $19.8 million, or 29% of the 2017 to 18 general fund expense operating budget, which moves the city closer to the council goal of 30%. The recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 2016 to 17 fourth-quarter financial report, as well as adopt the resolution amending the 2017 to 2018 operating and capital project budgets for the items detailed on page 2 of the agenda report. This concludes my presentation. I am with our finance manager, Richard Hertz, and we are available for questions.
Councilmember Green.
All right. I did meet with our city manager on your budget and the, what do we call this, the general fund balance at the end of the year of $6.378 million. And I had some questions because I knew, and I wasn't really sure how things worked. And I know that when we initially went over the budget, we wanted the budget balanced, and we were unclear of what the, you know, general fund, you know, surplus or whatever was going to be at the end of the year at that point in time, and we got a budget. The only reason why I'm even, why I even pulled to speak right now is because the cross-country lady who was here earlier talked about her shared use agreement, and how now she pays for the park. And I've been approached by other organizations that now pay for parks and pay for different items. And a few years ago, we changed the shared use agreement with the City of Vista. And it was, you know, when I spoke with Patrick about it, our city manager, I was told that we need to bring this back up in March and reset our goals and talk about it. But I don't know how many of my colleagues have spoken with Patrick about the change in the, you know, shared facilities use agreement. So I wanted to bring it up, because we've had several conversations about it. And the bottom line, what it sounded like to me, is that we were losing about $70,000 per year as a city, allowing the school district to use our facilities how they wanted to use them, our parks and things like that. And we decided, as a, I guess as a counselor, as a city, to stop allowing our organizations to use our parks for free. So I've been approached by not only the cross-country team, but also like the, you know, Ranch One of Us, the high school band that now has to pay $1,300 for the park when they have their annual field tournament. My problem with this is that we're not really sticking it to the school district. They're not doing anything to take care of it. Our citizens are the ones having to pay for it, as you heard today. So I don't know necessarily that I'm even allowed to change any of the funds that are on this, you know, that are allocated, the millions that are going into reserves and going towards the pension. But I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues know that it was changed, because we were losing about $70,000 per year. That change has affected, you know, maybe not all 22,000 students in RBV, you know, maybe, you know, 33% of them, as we know, are in Oceanside, but a whole lot of Vista residents and a whole lot of Vista parents, just like me, who has to have to raise money for the cheer squad and all that stuff. And we end up paying for our facilities. So as taxpayers, there's been a little frustration on, hey, now we have to pay, we weren't paying before. Why was that? And it did come down to a $70,000, you know, negative to us as a city. So my question is, to my council members, is in the future, you know, if we have $6.378 million coming in at the end of the year, do we really want to take a hard line on, you know, our parks fees to make 70,000 extra bucks and make all these parents and organizations come up with all this extra money? Like, is that something, is that a hard-line stance we need to take for our fiscal sustainability? So I just wanted to ask. I think this is the question I want to ask, so...
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I appreciate you raising the point. I think the city's getting a bad rap, because we have a facility-sharing agreement. Is the school board, the VUSD school board continuing to use the city hall for their meetings?
That's correct, yeah.
You know, in good conscience, until they prioritize, so it's bank. There's a time bank. We get to use their facilities, they get to use ours, and we keep a paper accounting to make sure that there's an equitable exchange of value. The VUSD district has its own headquarters, which are sufficient to conduct their meetings. They make a choice, the school board does, to use our facilities because, quote, "they're nicer." When they do that, they deduct from the time bank, and they reduce the amount of time that's available generally for use of parks by the marching band or the cross-country team. So the real issue, and I personally, as I understand it, what this comes down to is a prioritization of use and a respect for the equitable exchange of value. In other words, if we don't hold the school district to account for their, for their use of our facilities, then there is a possibility, and in some cases, like with the RBV marching band, we, in that case, absolutely had a private league that wanted to use the field, and we had to forego $1,600 in revenue in order to accommodate the marching band, who then was required to pay an equivalent fee, or actually, a little bit less. You know, I do think we should always be giving the lowest rate to the schools, but the parks are expensive to maintain. And it wasn't so many years ago that 100,000 here and 100,000 there really was making the difference. With your help and the rest of the council's help, but I particularly appreciate you joining me and fighting the paper deficit, we were able to eliminate that. That has caused things to be even tighter than ever. I would, however, say that if it's true it's only 20 to 30 students that are using the park on a weekly basis, I have a difficult time understanding how their impact on the park is sufficient to cause them to need to pay for their practice. And I'd like to examine that issue, if the staff could educate us on what the assignable costs of that use are. But I think perhaps we should consider eliminating that particular one. And I'm totally open to having this conversation, but I think also, we need to ask students and teachers and parents to go to VUSD and ask them to consider what their priorities are with the Bank of Time that we've made available to the school district. I think that that's the point that our staff's been making. And I'm open to, you know, it doesn't have to be, it didn't have to be one-for-one. You know, we're here to serve the students and teachers and the parents, so maybe we do want to, maybe, maybe we want it to be slightly weighted in their advantage, and maybe that's not a problem for us. But we do, we essentially, in all things that we subsidize, we have to look carefully what those subsidies are, because they really add up. And that's why I want to address something specifically that's not a small thing. We've got outlined here a half of a million dollars for Monique Court Street Improvements. And I was supportive of the concept of returning Monique Court, which, if you'll recall, residents and owners, it's primarily a rental complex. I don't believe there's any owner-occupied housing there.
I think there's some, but...
There's some?
Yeah.
So the, but the residents and owners have not heretofore formed an association for the maintenance and, of their community. And there is a strange situation that exists, which is, you know, the street that I live on is a private street, and the city doesn't pay to rip it out when it needs to be replaced, right? So, and for the most part, when we develop, when developers build, we require them to be responsible. Monique Court particularly only serves the residents of Monique Court. It's not a throughway. It's not a neighborhood road. It really actually constitutes a driveway in their neighborhood. And for some reason, 20, almost 30 years ago, the city made a decision, we have no documentation, don't understand why, but the city made the decision to accept that as a public street. The Monique Court is not in great condition now. And there was a, there was an idea that we discussed with the owners, the ones who we are in communication with, which was to return Monique Court to a grade B to A condition, really return it back to a very usable, serviceable condition, and then to ask them from that point forward to be responsible for the maintenance of it. And I understand that heretofore, they have not acquiesced to our request to take ownership and responsibility. And for that reason, I really wonder whether or not the half million dollars in discretionary spending, there's a lot of neighborhoods in our community that need sidewalks for kids to walk to school. There's a lot of areas of our community where we have roads that are not arterial, that only serve the people that live on them, that are in bad condition. And I, and I can't see my way to authorizing this half million dollars, which is an extraordinary sum of money, unless the property owners of Monique Court will accept this very generous compromise, where we transfer a large amount of value to them in exchange for their agreement to become the owners. I'm willing to look at it in terms of where it is prioritized with other streets, but, and if it indeed constitutes a greater priority for road spending than some other expenditure, then I would be willing to okay that. But if it does not constitute in a, in an unbiased and in an objective way, that level of priority, then I wouldn't want to spend that money there. And so I think that's something we might want to look at, whether or not that's really the right investment for half a million dollars. So, but that's, that's all I have to say about the report right now.
What I might suggest on Monique, and there's some, there's other issues, and Ms. Zimmerman, our Assistant City Manager, had a meeting with the owners and the tenants of that area. If you'd like, you could leave this on, the fourth-quarter report. And what we could do is, in the future, when we're ready to go forward with something or have a recommendation, we'll come back on that specific funding source and that item, and we'll show you the pavement management index on it, and you can make the decision on whether you think it's warranted to spend it there or elsewhere throughout the city.
What I would suggest is that if, in fact, it merits based on the index, and where every other street is indexed, if it's in a high enough priority, then it should be included in our regular capital improvement budget. But I don't understand why that, or actually, any street would rise to the level of a discretionary expenditure item, unless we're achieving the goal of divesting the city of a long-term liability. If we had that divestiture, then I would say, good, good use of discretionary funds. But otherwise, I think it should just be budgeted and prioritized in the same way that every other street in the city is. So I couldn't understand a special prerogative or priority for that street above any other street.
Well, I think, just to put it in perspective a little bit, you may remember, it came to our attention that we were the, under the assumption that it was a private street. And when we realized that it was public, and this was done back in 1981, so it's been 36 years of... 36 years of no maintenance. And so that's why there was a more immediate need to try to do something to improve that street. We certainly met with the property owners, and if you want more of a report, Ms. Zimmerman can give that to tonight, to try to find out if there was a receptive nature of them receiving that back. And at that time, there wasn't during that meeting.
Yeah, I absolutely would, if I were the property owner, I wouldn't want to accept it back either. And I could totally understand why they would not want to accept that liability. But why then would we prioritize outside of our normal capital infrastructure budget and out of our discretionary expenditures? Why would we, why would we assign it such a high priority? I could see, again, putting it into its normal place, but I also think that there's a carrot-and-stick possibility there for negotiating that maybe, you know, there's something of, there's something there that everybody else is not getting, and there are many residents of the city that might come to see us and say, why Monique Court and why not my street? I've got potholes, I've got this, that, or the other. I don't have sidewalk, I don't have curb and gutter. How do we, how do we justify making that a priority above other things is my concern.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Warham. This is a great report. I appreciate all of the work that you do for us, both of you. Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Councilman Green about the Vista Unified School District Joint Use Agreement and issues. That would be a deeper discussion to have because I do have some issues with Vista Unified. I have some issues, it's no secret, with the joint use agreement that we have with the school district over the years, how that has been used or abused. And when we talk about trying to, you know, looking at monies, you know, they have to pay for things with other school district. People pay taxes to the city, people pay taxes to the school district, and the school district should be responsible for the facilities for their students. And the school district is also partially in Oceanside, and so how would we affect getting Oceanside families to pay their, you know, or should we be using Vista City funds to pay for Oceanside family activities through the school district? I think not. And we had an issue when I was on Parks and Recreation Commission a few years ago with one of the swim teams using the wave, and they were destroying it, and we were always having to make repairs, and it was costing the city a lot of money. And no matter what we said to the school district about, get your people in check, this is not their living room, it's not their backyard, this is a city facility that you are guests in, take care of it. It didn't happen until we decided to send them the bill for the repairs. And then finally, the VUSD sat up and said, okay, guys, we're not going to pay for this, behave yourselves. So to me, scaling back on what the city has them pay for above and beyond the joint use agreement is a slippery slope for me. So that would have to be a much deeper discussion and itemized discussion, going through the whole agreement and then going through anything additional that the school district would want to talk about. So I can't just say, yeah, I'm with you on that, because I'm really not with you on that. And then as far as Monique Court goes, that's a tough one because I understand both positions. I'm not, and that was my first blush as well, because I have been talking to the city manager a lot about one particular neighborhood in Vista, and I know that we are resurfacing all of our streets in Vista, and we are making our way through, and we have them prioritized. But there's one neighborhood that I really think should be at the very, very top of that list because that poor neighborhood, their roads are so bad, they're looking at terra firma. There are parts of their road that they just don't have any asphalt left, but they're not the highest on the list. Neither should Monique Court be, perhaps. But the fact that they've had absolutely no maintenance in 30-some years because we thought they were a private street all along, maybe they should get bumped up to the top. But then I look at this other neighborhood, and I look at their street, and I wonder, when was the last time they had maintenance? And we know they're a public street. So I have to agree that using these funds for that, I'm not sure is the best use for those funds. But it's a really, it's a really badly maintained street, and then if we, and I think getting them to take ownership of it as a private street is a separate discussion that doesn't sound like it's going to go well. And it might end up continuing to be a public street, which we're going to have to continue to maintain. So I do have some reservation about using these funds for that project as necessary as it might be. And then Michigan Avenue, 119 Michigan Avenue, yay. I think that's a great, a great purchase, to have that little spot back in, to have that in the city possession so that we have something that we can do with that downtown. So I absolutely agree with that. The only, the only one that I would really have to think about, or, you know, just have to talk about, perhaps we can pull it from this and have a bigger discussion, is the Monique Court. So I would agree with Deputy Mayor Franklin on that one.
Maybe we can have them, we could, you know, prove it, and then have them bring that back to us when it comes to that or something, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, two things. Number one, on that $500,000 for Monique Court, I like the idea of giving it to the property owners with the stipulation that they have a road maintenance agreement amongst the property owners. They don't necessarily have to have a homeowners' association in place to have a road maintenance agreement, but it is something that we should be able to negotiate with the homeowners in the area and have added to title so that all new purchasers know there's a road maintenance agreement. And whatever that agreement is, is theirs, and it's no longer the use of the city. So I would say, if we pump $500,000 into that street, we basically pump it in there with the intention of turning it over. So I'm totally okay with spending the $500,000 as long as now it's a private street, since it is encompassed basically by all of those residents. From the standpoint of the funds that I was speaking of, I'm really unhappy with the school district as well and their use of our shared agreement. I do feel like they're eating up a lot of the students' money and, you know, the nonprofit organization's money. So I do plan on speaking with them. It's my understanding they're not eating up all of it, though. So I do appreciate you being open to it not having to be, you know, apple for an apple, per se. You know, anytime we have the ability to impact, you know, 10,000 Vistons, say, for that minimal amount of money, I think that's good money spent. And, you know, regardless of, hey, the school district's blowing it or we're blowing it, I equate it sometimes to, we're both parents of the city together, and together, the students and the, you know, the city are our children, and we need to work together to do whatever is best for them as a whole. So I definitely want to look at it as a much bigger conversation. I wanted to bring it up now so you knew something I'm going to bring up because I am passionate about kids in the city, and I'm a member of so many 501(c)(3) organizations that raise tons of money that we would like to be used for our students as opposed to park fees. So in the future, that's something. But the way this is, like I say, I would be okay with it as long as that $500,000 went with the stipulation of a transfer of ownership on that Monique Court and them to have their own road maintenance agreement. So it's totally approvable on that.
I think we need to bring that back. The only thing about that is, it's, it is a city street. Now it is city-owned, it's a city street, and we've ignored it for 30-plus years. So you can, you know, if they don't, if they don't want it, it is a city street. If they don't want it, it belongs to us. So, you know, how long can you ignore something like that? That would be my only point on that. So, but I would say, when they get ready to do that or whatever, to come back, come back to us and bring that one issue back to us. So, and the only other thing I would say about the school district is, you know, we all, we all get taxes, but we get 14 cents on the dollar and they get 40, what do they get, 40?
43 cents on the dollar.
43 cents on the dollar, you know, so...
On average.
On average, Joe. And we meet with them quarterly and talk about the shared use, so we do that, you know, and they knew, they knew that it was way outweighed before, you know, so, anyway. Yeah, and I remember the weight problems and all the other stuff, so, yeah, I'm okay with that. So, anyway, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
The briefest of comments, but could we consider a special district for Monique Court? Just a thought.
I tell you what, if you're in agreement, what we'll do is, if you agree to keep it on there, we will pursue the options that were discussed. If we can't get to that point, we will come back to you with it as an individual item for discussion. Fair enough?
Yep, fair enough. So do you need a motion for that, for approval of this, or what?
Yeah, you need to...
You're to see them file?
To adopt a resolution and order.
Okay, do we have a motion down there in a second? Okay. Cast your votes. See if it shows up this time. Nope.
That motion passes 4-0 with Aguilar absent.
Okay, so that brings us to our oral communications. We have one person, Kathleen Boyle.
Three minutes brief, and non-contentious. I belong to a group that we started called Vista Neighbors in Action. Some other people like that name, and they're using it also. So we were neighbors in action, so we had to put the Vista there, so we're our own thing. And we go around the neighborhood, we're trying to get to know our neighbors. This kind of came about after last year when, in many cases, people couldn't even have Thanksgiving together because of difficult discussions. So we wanted just to kind of go calm everything down, talk, literally talk to our neighbors, knock on the doors, and not push anything at them. This is not nonpartisan, and we go door-to-door, we're not trying to get them to register to vote or anything. And we ask them what's going on, what they like about, we're very local, we keep it local, what they like about Vista, what are some issues. And we don't come out with that first, we just let them talk. And the issues are very local. It's graffiti, sidewalks in some places, what's another one? Oh, noise. So I was very happy, I was at city, I was here today, and I saw this Access Vista card because I have tried to explain Access Vista and the app to people at the door, and there's an age divide. Over a certain age, people have to really be explained. Under a certain age, they've got it on their phone before we even finish talking. So I was glad to see these, and they're very sturdy and nice. One of the things that we asked them about is, do you know that Vista is in votes by district now, or is going to be voting by district? Most people have never heard of that. So one thing I would love to have, I got these from, the city clerk today made me some copies, but they're not, like, available for people. You have to ask for them or print them out at home. We don't just give them out willy-nilly, but if a person shows interest, we will give them one. But we like to have them when we go out to show them. The map doesn't show the streets. I just wish there were a better map that you could see the street boundaries. You could go on the interactive map and grab that one, but there's really nothing really good. You could walk around and show somebody where one district begins and where another one ends. So that's one thing I love. And another thing is, I would like to start a trend of calling the districts north, south, east, and west. I just think that one, District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, sounds like The Hunger Games, or it sounds like something from communist, you know, Stalin, Russia, like some housing block or something. So I think north, south, east, west, it's kind of round anyway, you can kind of get it. I always have to think, which district am I in? So I think that would be a better way to go. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to say. Oh, yes, one more thing. We, Vista Neighbors in Action, we're going to have a little party on the 22nd and Ringle Terrace in District 2, the East District. And I'll leave some invitations for everybody. It's in the park, it's 11 to 2. We're going to have a scare zone for kids, face painting, things like that. So we'd like for all of you to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. That brings us down to, she's only, our only oral communications speaker, and so that brings us to remarks. So I'll start down with Councilmember Green. You have any remarks tonight?
Just thank you all for showing up, and, you know, although my colleagues and I don't all agree, I think we have a great relationship, and it's great to have all these different personalities and all these different perspectives up here representing our city. So I do think that we all do a great job of agreeing on it. I always tell people, I agree with my wife on less than 80% of things. So, and we have a great marriage, 19 years. So although we might not agree on every issue, I do appreciate the work and all of, you know, the thought that you guys put into the decisions you make. So thank you so much. And I'd also like to thank Gary Garretson in the back for just being an involved community member. We didn't see eye to eye on this issue, but it was very important to him, and he worked very hard. And it's a good example for other community members. If you have something that you're, you know, not happy about, do something about it. Don't talk about it, be about it. So thank you, Gary. That's it.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I also want to thank all the citizens who came out tonight and all those who made phone calls, wrote emails, got involved in the community. And I think a lot of people got to know new faces in their own neighborhoods maybe they didn't know before. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate my colleagues on the council and the robust debate and discussion that we had tonight, and appreciate the time on the issue tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate on my colleagues, thank you all for being here, and for those of you who are still here, appreciate that very much, everybody who made calls, in emails, voicemails, I got a few voicemails. But also, I want to say thank you to staff. You do a great job for us, and it does not go unnoticed, always thank you. But I do want to say that last week, I did spend a morning, and I don't know if Chief Vanderpool got the short straw or not, but he was my handler last week, keeping me safe and sound. The Vista Fire Department was over at the shopping center at Breeze Hill Plaza, where it's going to be torn down, and apartments are going to be built there. But the Vista Fire Department used that facility for training purposes, and not just for the Vista Fire Department, but fire departments from all over North County. I think the Carlsbad was there, Encinitas...
Valley Center.
Valley Center. One of the Indian reservations was here, Solana Beach was here. Anyway, so they dressed me, they protected me, and Chief Easterling and Chief Vanderpool were very nice to me and let me see how it works, what the training is, and what they were doing in there. And it was really very fascinating, and it was, it was eye-opening for me. So I wanted to say thank you to the fire department for hosting that, for our regional fire departments being the lead on that, but also particularly to Chief Easterling and Chief Vanderpool for being the ones who took care of me and stayed with me. And I'm so sorry that you got the short straw, but thank you.
They actually stayed with all of us. I think we all did it, Joe. Councilmember Green did it, and I know Councilmember Aguilera, did you, Deputy Mayor, also go? No, he didn't. The rest of us did, so it was, it was very interesting to, I have the deepest respect for them going through all the stuff that they went through, so...
Yes, it was very good.
Yes, it was very good. So with that, I'll do my public service announcements here, I always have. Okay, we have a lot going on in Vista this weekend, a lot. So the Vista Fire at Fire Station 5, they're going to be there for an open house. You can join them on Saturday, October 14th, from 1 to 4, in honor of Fire Prevention Week. Fire Station 5 is located at 2,009 South Melrose. It's by the parks we are talking about, kind of by South Vista Park down there, South Point Vista Park. Altive Vista Gardens is also hosting an event on Saturday, their Fall Fun Festival, runs from 10 to 3. The event is free, and families can celebrate fall with crafts, games, music, and dance for kids. And they also have like a scarecrow contest where the kids can go and make a scarecrow there, and then there's judging for the best scarecrow. And then also on Saturday, the Vista Library is holding their Fall Festival from 12 to 3, and that's a family-friendly event, and it's with dancing, puppet shows, and a pumpkin decorating contest. And then on Sunday, the next day, Sunday, you can enjoy the Vista Vintage and Makers' Market in Historic Downtown from 10 to 4. And the event offers shoppers a place to celebrate all things old, new, and reimagined. And so all these are community events are open to the public, and they're listed on the city's events calendar at cityavista.com. I'm going to turn this to my city manager, and he probably has announced this too, and we're going to do the fire update, yeah.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, the construction and maintenance, there'll be services for the maintenance of the Coaster and Amtrak on October 21st and 22nd. So there will not be any Coaster or Amtrak traveling from Oceanside to San Diego. So if you're interested, you can go to the website for NCTD, which is goNCTD.com, and find out more. And if the council will indulge this, I know it's 8:22, but the fire chief would be more than happy to give you an update on the fires in California, both Northern and Anaheim, and what our situation is here with the weather in San Diego, if you'd like. Okay? So Chief Hong.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just kind of pursuant to the updates that we talked about a couple of months ago, obviously we've had some fire activity. We are in that season for Southern California right now, as you know, and we are going through that typical annual pattern of highs and lows that are rolling through California and going to the four corners and creating those fire conditions that we, that we have every year here in Southern California. Obviously, we've had significant fire activity in Northern California. Our forces were called to Northern California to assist. The high that rolled through really targeted Northern California, we did not get it here. But there was significant fire activity up there. Over 100,000 acres has burned just in the last several days, devastating communities, if you've seen... Devastating communities, if you've seen the news, of Santa Rosa, Mendocino, Napa, Sonora, Yuba, and Butte Counties, where that acreage was lost. Currently, I have information that 13 civilian lives have been lost up there. And unfortunately, the intelligence that I'm getting is that they're, they have not gotten to many areas where there are likely to be more fatalities. This fire, these fires up there started at night. There was not the ability to give adequate notification, and they were wind-driven and came very fast into these communities and caught a lot of people there. Over 1,500 homes at this point have been documented as being destroyed. Conflagration occurred that took out urban areas, not just interface areas. Big hotels, box retailers, Kmart went down in this, so it was a significant event in Northern California. They did call for help, we responded, we've sent all the resources we can out of San Diego County while keeping adequate resources for the predicted Santa Ana events here. We have a, four of our department personnel on an engine that was sent north, and one of our battalion chiefs is a strike team leader trainee. They did not make it to Northern California on their way through the Los Angeles Basin. Fire kicked up, that I'm sure you've heard of also, the Canyon Two Fire in Orange County. They were redirected to that. That fire is about 7,500 acres, currently 25% contained. They don't have a structure count, but it's in the dozens of structures and homes lost. Fortunately, no loss of life at this point, and our units are still there working today. For local, we were lucky enough, just based on where that high parked, it really put those winds and that gradient north of us, and we never really developed a strong Santa Ana here. The Santa Ana that developed in Orange County was only really moderate. It wasn't like, you know, like we've seen in the big fires down here. Wind speeds did not exceed 50 miles an hour, I'm told, whereas we were approaching 100 down here from the Witch Fires and the Cedar Fires when those came through. So it was a moderate event. Fortunately, the red flag conditions here have expired. We do have another high coming in this weekend, where we're going to see the humidity drop again, and we'll see some wind also, and this is just going to be an up-and-down pattern that we're going to see over the next couple of months until the storm pattern comes in from the Gulf of Alaska and we get some rain. So we're definitely on it. And I guess in, in closing, you know, we certainly have, during this red flag, we put up our notifications to the public, put out the signs, put up the flags, you know, released information to the media, as many fire departments in our county have, and maintained forces and readiness. All of our prevention programs that we've had out there with weed abatement and vegetation management, hopefully are going to make that difference. And truly, what we've seen in the fires up north, if you watch the news coverage, you'll see the homes that survive are the ones that are prepared. And, you know, that's, again, we can't underscore that enough. That's really the solution to keeping and protecting homes and giving us a chance at saving homes here. So hopefully, you know, the season won't be too dramatic from here out, but that's an update on where we are today.
Thank you, Chief Hahn. We appreciate that. With that, anything down here, the city attorney or city clerk? Nope? Okay, so with that, we are adjourned at 8:27.